Called to order, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, November the 2nd, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees be reminded to turn off your microphone and camera on your devices until you are recognized to speak. Please only use the chat box to type "hand up." Once you've been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. Land acknowledgement. November is Indigenous Awareness Month. I asked Sherri Seville, our Indigenous educationist advisor, to please start off our meeting with the land acknowledgement.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Yes, I'm more than pleased to say that land acknowledgement this evening and give you a little bit of background later on. So, of course, we know Halton is rich in the history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the lands of the Anishinaabe to the Atawar, the Haudenosaunee, and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in Indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, our Catholic social teachings calls us in solidarity with Indigenous brothers and sisters to honor and respect the four directions: lands, waters, plants, animals, and ancestors that walked before us. All these wonderful elements of creation exist, gifted to us by our Creator God. We acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for being stewards of this traditional territory.
Sherri, would you like us to keep going?
Yes, please. I just wanted just to talk just a tiny little bit. I'll take maybe three more minutes of your time. But when we're looking at the land acknowledgement, what we're really wanting to do is, you know, we are a community. Our community is more than the land in which we live, work, and play on. And there are many things from our own communities and our culture, identity, and upbringing that have shaped us of who we are today and who we will be tomorrow. When we think about the people, the languages, the culture, the land, the shared stories, and customary practices, and celebrations that have even influenced you in your life, these are integral components of how community helped create your story and shaped your identity, your beliefs, your traditions, and your worldview. Each community member must... Each community member should feel a sense of pride, belonging, and empowerment. We just have to ask ourselves, where do you come from? You know that where you come from is just more than a location on a map. It's also part of your story, and it helps form your cultural identity, your relationship to the land, and all the living things: humans, animals, insects, plants, and water. And of course, a strong and healthy community relies on relationships built on mutual trust and respect. These relationships starts with self, then extend outwards towards others: the land, including the water, the plants, and the animals, and sharing the land. So we do have a collective and individual responsibility to maintain a healthy relationship with the land. And so when we are doing land acknowledgements, we need to... We don't need to, but we... The hope is to learn through the relationships that we have with others, how we build a healthy relationship, how we affirm our responsibility to maintain those loving and respectful relationships to the land. And by examining our relationship to the land, where we live and work and play on, we are also having responsibility to take care of the land, and we do this for future generations by building more sustainable, loving, nurturing, safe, healthy, diverse, and thriving communities that are imbued with respect for the land. And even leading into that land acknowledgement and going into the treaties and Treaty Recognition Week that we have this week, numerous... A whole week of announcements were created for our schools that we can actually just learn a little bit more about what some of those treaties are, and really to dive into what we all have been missing in our own education. Now, when we are... There's lots of... We've created lots of... Lots of... Sorry, lots of resources. And so we just have to go and look on Library Services at HCDSP. And there, they've created a huge curated list of resources of the curriculum, things like that, that we can look on there, and then it's just a click of a button. So trying to make it a lot easier for our teachers to learn and to have that information right at your fingertips. The other thing that we've done too is we've pre-recorded four videos for all of our students from K to 12 that will take part in painting with our dear friend Moses Latem, who comes from Kettle and Stony Point, to teach a little bit more about our responsibilities, both the treaty, the dish with one spoon, our relationship to the land, and the water, and the plants and animals. So I just wanted to thank you so much for allowing me to have this time, just to kind of keep you updated of what we're doing as far as educating our staff and our students when it comes to Treaty Education Week. So thank you for having me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Sherri. As always, very, very enlightening as you help us on our personal journey, so we appreciate it very much. Student trustee Bowie, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, national anthem, and oath of citizenship?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to apologize to everyone in advance. My voice is a little bit hoarse. I've been a little bit sick the past couple days. But I just ask you all to join me in praying the prayer of our Lord, the Our Father, to start off this meeting. So in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord, I'm sorry, Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day your daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us all into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. I now ask everyone to join us in standing for the national anthem and oath of citizenship.
There were no motions adopted in camera. Information received in camera. Vice Chair Duarte, please read the information received in camera.
Mr. Chair, information received in camera. The following information was received in camera. Curriculum consultant generalist ESL Robert Petrowski, appointed as curriculum consultant generalist ESL effective October 25th, 2021, for a period of up to three years, with the possibility of a one-year extension. Resignation. Erica Hanley resigned, effective November 2nd, 2021. Retirement. Diego Gilis will retire, effective November 11th, 2021. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Vice Chair Duarte, you will move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? I'd like to move a notice of motion. Is this the appropriate time to do it, or I can wait?
Yes, this is the right time. Trustee Carabella had her hand up also, but please go ahead, and we'll go to trustee Carabella next.
Okay, I will state the title as required and customary. The title is Financial Oversight and Accountability Committee.
Financial Oversight and Accountability Committee. So this will be item 10.6. Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The title of my notice of motion is Secondary Exam Feedback.
Okay, so 10.7, Secondary Exam Feedback. Thank you very much. So we will go to a recorded vote to approve the agenda as amended. We have a mover? Vice Chair Duarte, we have a seconder? Seconder?
O'Brien.
Carabella, yeah.
Vice Chair Duarte, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Demasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. Motion carries. Moving on to item 3, declarations, conflict of interest. Do we have any conflicts of interest tonight? No? There are no presentations. Delegations, 5.1, declined delegation. There was one delegation that was declined this evening. Moving on to 6.1, approval of minutes. Approval of the minutes, October...
Point of order, Mr. Chair, there's a delay here. Can you please speak to the declined delegation?
Yes, the delegation, we did not receive the script in time. Therefore, we were not able to allow it to proceed.
How late was it?
I don't recall. Two hours, according to Director Dely, two hours. It's included as correspondence in tonight's package. Approval of the minutes, the minutes of October 19th, 2021, regular board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions? Seeing that there are none, we'll go to recorded vote. Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Demasi?
Opposed.
Oh, sorry, I jumped the gun. I didn't get a mover or a seconder. Do I have a mover to accept the minutes? Vice Chair Duarte, a seconder? Seconder to approve the minutes?
Seconded, O'Brien.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien.
My hand is out.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I don't have my chat box up. My apologies. Sorry, go ahead, trustee O'Brien.
Mr. Chair, I know this happens a lot, that there are trustees that do not approve the minutes, and I feel obliged to state something here. Unless you are not at the meeting, it's only my opinion, but I can't see a good reason not to approve the minutes, because all the minutes are saying is that this happened. Doesn't mean you agree to disagree with what happened, but I just want to put it out there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that, trustee O'Brien. It really doesn't... It's not appropriate at this time, but it has been said.
I can address that from a point of order.
Well, point of order is a rule that's been broken. It's really not a point of order.
That is correct. That is correct. That is exactly what I'm addressing, Mr. Chair.
What rule?
Insofar as the statement that's been... Have I been recognized? Do I have the floor?
Yes, yes, you do.
Insofar as the comment by trustee O'Brien, and he did state that it was his opinion, minutes are a record of what took place in a meeting. If those minutes do not reflect properly what happened in a meeting, because the minutes do become legal binding documents that can be used for whatever later on, then any trustee can vote in favor, against, or abstain.
Thank you. That's again, opinion, not a point of order, but I will affirm, trust me, trustees have the right to vote whichever way they choose. So we're going to a recorded vote on 6.1, which is approval of the minutes. Trustee Guzzo, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Demasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
I'm going to abstain.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy's in favor, so the motion carries. Item 7, 7.1, summary of outstanding items from previous meetings. Yes, vice chair Duarte?
Mr. Chair, I have my hand up. Give me a second. I'd like to request that the motion that was unanimously passed at the last board meeting, motion 297, 21, be added to this document and the motion regarding the response to the delegation. I read the start of the report and end of the package. It does not refer to that particular motion, and it does not call... Does not answer to those questions there. So I'd like to ask to end that, to business arising.
So I'll have... I'm just going to refer to Permitery Kapor for some voice. So this is preemptive, since we haven't had the report yet. Would it be appropriate to add it back on at this point, the outstanding items, if it hasn't been addressed?
I'm sorry, Chair. Is the report being addressed later in this agenda?
Yes.
Today?
Yes, and it is part of the package, therefore it can be read and understood at this point.
Correct. I think you can do it now, or you could wait until after any discussion on that agenda item, and at that point, the trustee could ask to do it after the discussion, but I think it's a... I think it could go either now or at that point.
Okay, so I think it's appropriate. We can put it on now, if we're allowed, so we will put it on. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to put on the... Onto this section, business arising from previous meetings, the Ad hoc Bylaw Review Committee. This was an action item that we voted on in May 19th, 2020, and we have not yet called our first meeting, and so that's something that would be a next step. And I think that this is the right place to put it on, that we acknowledge that the motion passed, and is just awaiting to start actually holding the meeting and electing a chair in terms of reference. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Through further investigation, we determined that Resolution 11120 was never enacted, so I think it's appropriate, we can put it on, and then the secretary, vice chair, and myself will have to get together to look at schedule to call the first meeting of the ad hoc committee. Trustee Guzzo, do you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So then are we, just so I understand, if we're adding it to outstanding meetings, so then are we then saying that we're not going to utilize our bylaws in regards to using the policy committee to review the bylaws?
So based on the way that the resolution reads and the advice, I reached out to Permitery Kapor for advice, it looks like we need to follow and enact this resolution, which would be to call a separate ad hoc bylaw review committee, elect a chair in terms of reference and what have you. So then, yes, we would be doing the review within this committee.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you. So we have no other matters, we can move on to action items. Item 8.1, North Oakville Number 4 Catholic Elementary School Boundary Review Committee. Superintendent Merrick, would you like to speak to the reports and read the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. This report is as presented at the October 19th meeting of the board. Happy to take any questions that trustees may have tonight. I know we answered a number of questions at the last meeting as well. And again, I just want to thank the members of the school boundary committee for this Oakville Number 4 Catholic Elementary School Boundary Review Committee. Much appreciated for your time. I know a couple of the members of the committee are actually on the line tonight, so thank you both very much for your time commitment to us in the process and seeing it through to this action report here tonight. So again, happy to take any questions that trustees may have, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
I'll read the motion, we'll call for a mover and a seconder, and then we'll open up the floor for questions. Be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board direct staff to implement the SBRC recommended boundaries for 2022-2023 school year for St. Gregory the Great, SEC, and North Oakville Number 4 SEC, whereby the changes shall have the effect of altering the existing attendance areas by, number 1, redirecting patch Z 14, 15, 16, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, from St. Gregory the Great CES to North Oakville Number 4. Resolve that students attending Grade 7 at St. Gregory the Great CES in the 2021-2022 school year and live within the North Oakville Number 4 CES boundary be grandfathered for the 2022-2023 school year. May I have a mover?
I will move, Mr. Chair.
Moved by trustee DeRosa, a seconder?
Carabella.
Trustee Carabella will open up the floor to discussion. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very pleased that this is being resolved for our board, especially for Oakville School. I would like to ask a question, because this depends on the school being built. And so what if it isn't built in time for the 2022-2023 school year? How does that affect the boundaries? Would they just continue going to St. Gregory the Great until the school is set to open?
Superintendent Merrick, you have the floor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. That's correct. We would just push it back a year and have them, can you just attend school at St. Gregory the Great CES until such time that we can open that school? I have to say, you know, the further we go into this fall without a response back from the ministry to proceed with the approval of the budget to construct this school, the more that becomes a reality, you know, as we've seen throughout the last, you know, probably year and a half to two years, construction pricing has gone up quite a bit, and as I reported at the last board meeting, the cost estimates for this project far exceed the funding provided by the ministry. So we have put that back to the ministry and requested additional funds to be able to complete the project, and they're contemplating that request right now. So, you know, I think it's more likely that it will not open in September 2022, but once we hear word back from the ministry that we're approved to proceed to tender and get on with construction, we can update trustees on that expected opening date, but at this time, it's kind of in the ministry's hands to approve us to proceed on at this point. I hope that answers your question there, trustee Carabella.
Thank you. I have just a follow-up then. Would that need to be reflected in... With wording in the actual motion, if the year becomes different than what's written in the motion?
Director Dely or Superintendent Merrick? Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I mean, I think it's implied. I mean, we can't put people in a school that doesn't exist, so they would stay where they are, and then we would, you know, erect or create that school when it's... When we're able to do so, when we have a building to do so.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are any... Do we have any other questions? If not, we'll go to a recorded vote. Vice Chair Duarte?
Mr. Chair, again, it's been... Since this has been an action item, and the committee members are on, I just want to, once again, say thank you for the wonderful work that you have done. It's been a pleasure attending the meeting along with Chairman Murphy, and give up the good luck and any of my support for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duarte. Yes, I think I commented before, when we're on these meetings, we tend to see a lot of the same people, so it's a testament to your commitment to your school community and to our board, and we appreciate it very much. So we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Demasi, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. Motion carries. Staff report, 9.1, proposed 2022 facility renewal project. Superintendent Merrick, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. We're presenting the proposed 2022 facility renewal projects. These are projects that would be completed in the summer of 2022, and we have six projects proposed for the summer of 2022, the first being a window replacement project at Christ the King Secondary School in Georgetown, the second project being the track resurfacing of the 400-meter track to Corpus Christi in Burlington. We also have a project at Holy Rosary School in Milton. There'd be a refresh and roof replacement at that school, and the refresh would include lighting and mechanical equipment as well. We also have turf replacement at St. Ignatius of Loyola in Oakville. We have a mechanical and refresh project, again, at St. John Burlington. That one does not include lighting, because the lighting was done back in 2016, but some cosmetic refresh and replacing the mechanical systems at St. John Burlington. And then as well, finally, the sixth project there is the roof replacement at St. Teresa of Calcutta in Oakville as well. For those six projects, the total with... But at this time, it's, it's kind of in the ministry's hands to approve us to proceed on at this point. I hope that answers your question there, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. I have just a follow-up then. Would that need to be reflected in, with wording in the actual motion if the year becomes different than what's written in the motion?
Director Daley or Superintendent Merrick? Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I, I mean, I think it's implied, I mean, we can't put people in a school that doesn't exist, so they would, they would stay where they are and then we would, you know, erect or create that school when it's, when we're able to do so and we have a building to do so.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are any, do we have any other questions? If not, we'll go to a recorded vote. Vice Chair Dwork?
Mr. Chair, again, it's been, since this has been an action item and the committee members are on, I just want to, once again, say thank you for the wonderful work that you have done. It's been a pleasure attending the meeting along with Chairman Worthy and give up the good luck and, 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 you know, my support for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Dwork. Yes, I think I commented before, when we're on these meetings, we tend to see a lot of the same people, so it's a testament to your commitment to your school community and to our Board, and we appreciate it very much. So we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Antamasi, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunato?
In favor.
See Boeing?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tewa?
In favor.
Trustee Agne?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Vice Chair Dwork? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor, motion carries. The staff report 9.1, proposed 2022 Facility Renewal Project. Superintendent Merrick, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. We're presenting the proposed 2022 Facility Renewal Projects. These are projects that would be completed in the summer of 2022, and we have six projects proposed for the summer of 2022. The first being a window replacement project at Christ the King Secondary School in Georgetown. The second project being the track resurfacing of the, of the 400-meter track to Corpus Christi in Burlington. We also have a project at Holy Rosary School in Milton. There'd be a refresh and roof replacement at that school, and the refresh would include lighting and mechanical equipment as well. We also have turf replacement at St. Ignatius of Loyola in Oakville. We have a mechanical and refresh project again at St. John Burlington. That one does not include lighting because the lighting was done back in 2016, but some cosmetic refresh and replacing the mechanical systems at St. John Burlington. And then as well, finally, the sixth project there is the roof replacement at St. Teresa of Calcutta in Oakville as well. For those six projects, the total with fees and contingency is approximately 6.75 million. That's our, our budget number for this, based on our estimates from past projects. And we would be sourcing that from available capital sources in the Capital Reserve, of which we have a current balance of approximately 14.5 million, so we would draw down that. Of course, the 6.75 million number is an estimate, it would actually be based on competitive tenders that would take place if trustees pass this motion going forward. And we have two resolutions proposed that we would bring to the November 16th meeting of the Board, the first to authorize staff to proceed to the projects, and the second to approve the budget of 6.75 million dollars. So happy to take any questions that trustees may have, and again, we would bring this back at the next board meeting for, as an action report for trustees to vote on.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Super, Trustee Antamasi, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. My first question, I'll go to Director Daley. Director Daley, this is a report that is a cyclical report, which we get every year. It gets brought to you by Superintendent Merrick. I take it, you've examined it, and you find the scope of work in keeping with what's needed in the schools that it speaks to?
Director Daley?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, yes, I do. Supplementary?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So I, I've looked at the, this particular cycle report for the last three years that we've been here and also years previous. And the report itself is always generic. It speaks to a refresh, it speaks to tiles being done, threads on stairs, it talks to about roofing and so on and so forth. But we never really get quantities. And the purpose of having quantities is so that there is some measure of accountability, especially insofar as the work that's being done. I've had occasion to visit about 50% of the schools from last year, and then when I go in there and I try to measure what we passed as a board in terms of monies, because the, the amount that's being asked is very specific, 6.7 million dollars, but I can't relate it back to square footages. In other words, I'll go into a school and I see, you know, 500 square feet of tile, and that's never been explained in the scope of work. I'm wondering now, Superintendent Merrick, moving forward, since you're going to be bringing this back to the Board for approval, so that we can release the funds, the 67.50 million dollars, can we have quantities, most specifically when we talk about St. John's Catholic Elementary School? I was at the opening at that school, and I've checked the threads, I don't see any breakdown of, of threads. I don't know how much painting we're going to be doing. I don't know, when you talk about the gymnasium floor, are you referring to complete redo? How many classrooms require doors? When we talk about Christ the King, I know for a fact that there has been problems there with the frames around the opening of doors, how many doors, which windows? This is just very open-ended, it's, it seems to be that it's just, you know, 6.7 million dollars, and let's see if it covers it. So, and then a supplementary to my question, because it's all tied in, does this reflect the new prices that are in the industry that we're facing today?
Superintendent Merrick, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. So my team, yes, trustees will remember, back in, would have been in the spring, usually it's in May, I have to go back and check the date for this year, but we bring forward our long-term capital plan, which also contains a component of renewal projects that we see on the horizon for future years. So we bring the trustees in the spring. Over the summertime, my team is out in schools, looking at the schools that are up for the following summer and what work needs to be done in those schools over that summer. We do a detailed list at that time and create an itemized list of what we see as needs in that school, and do some walkthroughs and, and create our list then. That is what we use to create these, these numbers here. In the, in the, in the spirit of bringing reports that are readable and, and can be consumed and are appropriate for governance of a school board, we don't contain all the detailed engineering specs throughout the, throughout this report. It would be many, many more pages, and I think it's already, you know, we're already completely close to 10 pages already. So that is what my team does, they're, they're engineering professionals, they, they do that kind of detailed work, and we create design specifications that would then go forward and go up for tender, and is what creates the, the scope of work for the project. So that work is done in the background, but is not brought here to the Board. That's part of, you know, that's part of good governance. If you want more detail on that, I can provide it, but I think this is, is sufficient in what we've done in the past, and that we have the type of requests going forward in the past. I'm sorry, I forget your last question there, Superintendent Antamasi, or Trustee Antamasi, maybe just remind me.
Oh, I, I, I said, does that particular budget estimate reflect the increases, the increased pricing that's prevalent in the industry?
Yeah, perfect, yeah, so, sorry about that. It, it would be, the quantities would have, would have been based over the summer, so the quantities obviously don't change. The, the cost estimates, we're updating those on, on a routine basis, so that would have been when we created the report, you know, in the last, you know, three, four weeks. So, I mean, prices are going up almost on a daily basis right now, and just because we put it on here as an estimate or as a budget price, doesn't mean when we go to tender it, we get that exact price, but it is our best guess at this point. And obviously, if we go to tender and the prices come in above, which we have seen on, on a couple of projects in the past number of years, we would come back to the Board and to request additional funds, or we would decide that it's, you know, the pricing at this time is, is too high and, and we don't want to pursue it. But that they are our best estimate at this point, given the, kind of where the current marketplace is.
Thank you. Vice Chair Dwork, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, and question to Superintendent Merrick, I look at this specifically as renewal projects, and I think we are doing a very good job of maintaining our schools. However, I have a question here, and I'm wondering how we determine which projects are priority. I've been in many schools, and most of them I'm in good shape, but I've seen some areas in some schools that need fixes. So how do we determine which projects are priority? For example, studies, sometimes missing or something is to be fixed. Does this request have to come from the principals, or do we go and do an annual inspection to determine the priority?
Superintendent Merrick, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Dwork. We, we base on a lot of different points of feedback, so we do get requests from principals that provide feedback. We also do surveys through our facility managers that are out in our schools every, every day. We have five facility managers, each like after two families of schools, so they know their, their schools very well. So we're, we're trying to, you know, take that input. I mean, these, these are only the large capital renewal projects that we, we have ongoing. We also have some smaller ones that we do every year, we do asphalt replacement every year, and we do a, an asphalt survey with our, with one of our, our staff members who's out in surveys asphalt every year to see what replacement goes on there. These, these are just really kind of the big capital, the big ticket ones that we bring here to the Board, and it's really populated through our, our long-term capital plan, which contains our, our Facility Renewal Plan as well. So we're trying to populate kind of the next five years in there, and then we kind of update and shuffle the order a little bit, both as our funding streams are realized and as the, the true needs of those, those facilities are realized and as we investigate more on them. So it, it is a fluent process, and, and we do have a lot of different data points that are coming into it. It, it is, it is a challenging process because there's, you know, we have a number of schools and a number of facilities with different needs, but we are trying to balance it and, I guess, prudently use the, the funding sources that we have coming in.
Vice Chair Dwork, do you have a follow?
No, I was, thank you, Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This might be for Superintendent Merrick or maybe Superintendent Lofts. My, my questions are, so I, I believe Superintendent Merrick mentioned the fact that there's currently 14 and a half million dollars in the Capital Reserve balance. And the simple math is that there would be probably just under 7 million dollars left once this, these funds are expended, and they should be, because these are, it's important to maintain our schools and keep them up. My question is, is there any projection to refund the balances or build up the reserves back to what they are? Is there some form of vision or plan in the near future or even in the medium future where that, where that will be done and how? And the, the other question is, is the 50 million dollars that we approved not too long ago, does that play into the funding of these, of these repairs or maintenance expenses? So I'm happy to have Superintendent Merrick or Superintendent Lofts answer the question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think Superintendent Lofts will, will start there, probably has, is able to answer those questions a little bit better, I'm assuming. Superintendent Lofts?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Just to remind trustees that 50 million dollars that was approved earlier, it was not for necessarily funding these projects, it was for, primarily for purchasing new sites. There is a capital or a funding, cash flow component to it, but we will be reimbursed by the ministry for these funds. So that 50 million dollars is separate per se from what Superintendent Merrick is talking about. I won't even include that in this discussion because really it isn't germane to the conversation. With respect to our reserves, I believe Superintendent Merrick mentioned that it's a combination of funding sources, that combination being our Facility Capital Reserve, which is our reserve balance, as well as any available funding from the school renewal grant, school condition improvement, proceeds of dispositions and whatnot. So it's not necessarily all in the reserve, Trustee De Rosa, it's a combination of many different funding sources. And I believe Superintendent Merrick, like that's in context as well.
Yes, Superintendent Merrick, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Superintendent Lofts stole some of my words there, but yet he is right, it is the combination of various funding sources that make up that 14.5 million. And just to give trustees some context, a program like school conditioning improvement, which makes up a portion of that 14.5 million, for the past number of years, the ministry has been funding us at a rate of about 5 million dollars per school year, so that kind of gets topped up each year. We also have school renewal allocation as well, that's a little over 2.0, almost 2.5 million dollars a year in, in, in that pool as well. So we're seeing some of those funds come in each year, and that's kind of the, to answer Trustee De Rosa's question, that's how it would be topped up for future years, as well as any contributions that we would make to our own Facilities Capital Reserve.
Yeah, follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, out of the 6.7 million dollars, how much is actually coming out of our reserves? Because I think I'm hearing that there's other sources by which that, those repairs will be funded, and that's fine. I'm just trying to see to what extent our reserves will be diminished by the 6.7. Have that number.
Superintendent Merrick, did you want to speak to that? It seems that was some of the numbers you just quoted.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Kind of the one piece, I guess it's two pieces of this one that have to go through that, that line, would be the track replacement as well as the, the turf replacement, or the track resurfacing and the turf replacement. Those two lines would be the ones that would need to go through the, the reserve, because they don't qualify for other ministry funding sources. But we typically try and spend all of the, the kind of annual ministry funding sources first. So that's, that's the typical order that we do, because they, they're kind of annual ones, and they have a lot of strings tied to them as well, on what you can and can't spend it on. So it would be about a million dollars from the, the Facilities Capital Reserve and the, the balance from other, other funding sources that are also available to the Board.
Just one closing comment, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, just.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So thank you, Superintendent Merrick, I'm looking for the comfort, well, I'm getting the comfort I was looking for, to, to the extent that we're really looking at 1 million dollars impacting the actual capital reserve itself. So that's, it's not to diminish the value of a million dollars, but it's certainly not 6.75, diminishing the total reserve. So I'm, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps this was already answered. So with the six, with the money remaining in the combination of capital funding sources and the capital reserve, what are the actual numbers that they're split between? Like how much ends up in the capital funding reserves and how much will be in the capital reserve? Once the, once the projects are finished?
Superintendent Merrick, would you want to take this one? I think you mentioned it was just the track, right?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. The, the Capital Reserve piece would end up being about a million dollars, which is the, the, the track resurfacing at Corpus Christi and the turf replacement at Loyola. The, the next, we typically try and spend school conditioning improvement funding, which is about 5 million dollars annually first, because it's, it's the most restrictive category that we have, it can only be spent on core building components. So that would make up another 5 million of the, of the, of the 6.75 million, and then the balance would go to our school renewal allocation, which on an annual basis is a little over 2 million dollars. I'll be sure that's about, the remaining 750,000 would go to that, that area there as well. So that's how the breakdown would follow.
Trustee Carabella, you have a follow?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Antamasi, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. So to continue on the same vein as Trustee De Rosa, I'm trying to establish, so the school facility and operational renewal grant that's, that's allotted to Boards based on the shape of their buildings, what was that in 2019-2020? How much were we given by the government to do that?
I'm not sure, Superintendent Merrick or Superintendent Lofts, if either one of you would have that information handy?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what, what grant is, our Trustee Antamasi?
That's the same grant as the updating of school fund.
So I, I can answer that, Trustee.
Yeah, go ahead.
So it, it's, it's an annual grant, and there, there's two different pieces of it, so there, there's.
Superintendent Merrick, all I want is what was the amount that we were given in 2019-2020?
Okay, let's, Superintendent Merrick, finish his train of thought, and then if it needs clarification, we can come back to that.
Yeah, so I was just explaining that there's actually two different pots of money that come from the ministry on an annual basis. We have the school renewal allocation, which is just over, I think it's about 2.2 million dollars per year, and that's been ongoing for the past, you know, decade or so. We also have the school renewal, sorry, the school conditioning improvement funding, which is about 5 million dollars for the past two or three years, that has been coming in as well. So prior to that, the past two or three years, it was about half that amount of funding, it was about 2.5 million, and it's only been around for about five or six years. So that funding is announced on an annual basis, and it's, I mean, it's not guaranteed every year, but it's been coming in steadily for the past number of years.
I think Superintendent Lofts would like to add some context to that, I see his hand up.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just, I think Superintendent Merrick might have reversed the very similar grant, school renewal last year in 1920 was about 4.7 million dollars, so close to 5 million dollars. And this year, it's going to be a little bit higher than that.
Trustee Antamasi?
So that's, yeah, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So what I'm trying to get at, when we ask for six, when we commit 6.75 million dollars to renewals scheduled from this year, they come from different pots. What I'm trying to establish is, how much were our reserves for capital expenditures were increased from 2019 to 2021? And of that amount, how much did we use last year, which would be deducted?
Superintendent Lofts, would you be the, would you have that information available?
Well, I think these are very specific questions, and through you, Mr. Chair, and as we all know, we are in the process of being audited right now, so we will have that information, we just don't have it right now, it is under the process of being audited, so I don't feel comfortable answering that, providing. So I don't feel comfortable answering that, providing that information at this time.
So thank you. You can get get it to us at a at a later date. Um do we have any other questions? Uh I would like, I'd like to ask one. So specifically, uh when we're looking at renewing facilities that there is community use funds generated, um how do those funds um get assigned or do they go into a general account? Or do they actually get assigned to uh capital renewal somehow? Superintendent Loth?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That is the the main, one of the main reasons why we we have to, we fund our our tracks and our um turf fields. Roughly, I guess it's around, Superintendent Merrick may correct me on this, around ten to fifteen years, I believe, is the lifespan of our turf fields right now. So those those funds that we received as a result of community use and such, we do put aside in a reserve for these very purposes to start using to um redo our tracks, redo our our turf fields when required. So that's essentially what uh Superintendent Merrick is bringing forward to the the Board of Trustees to approve, is us renewing our track or our fields and tracks as a result of um prior use and the amount of community use we do use with our facilities.
Okay, so there would be a, there would be a constant, I don't want to use the term trickle, of funds coming into that, but there would be as as the um ca- as the asset is being used and worn down, there will be funds that are coming in from the community use billing uh to offset those reserves.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh seeing that there's no other questions, we'll move on. Oh, trustee, do we have trustee Antomasi? Do you have your hand up again?
Yes. So um can you tell me what fund do we access for artificial turf simply because the ministry does not fund that? How are we funding and where is the money coming from?
Uh Superintendent Merrick, I think you you answered that. Maybe you can repeat that?
Yeah, that would be funded out of our facilities capital reserve, uh which Superintendent Loth just mentioned that we are putting our community use revenues or have been for many years, putting our community use of schools, uh cost recovery revenues uh into that account uh to plan for the inevitable replacement of those uh of those turf fields.
Yeah, I all I wanted validated is that that money is not accessed through the ministry. That is the money that we collect based on usage. The ministry does not give any monies towards upgrading of fields and so on and so forth. Is that correct?
Superintendent Merrick?
Uh the money that they give us for renewal would not be eligible to be used on uh on uh replacement of turf fields. That is correct.
That's correct. Thank you.
Uh thank you. So we're moving on to item nine point two Milton number ten Catholic Elementary School Boundary Review Committee Recommendation. Superintendent Merrick, you have the floor?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Uh we have the uh Milton number ten Catholic Elementary School uh Boundary Review Recommendation here for uh for trustees tonight uh in the staff report form. Uh so the board uh was approved to construct a new six hundred and seventy one pupil place school uh with a five room childcare back in July of twenty twenty, uh which we now know is uh was Milton number ten Catholic Elementary School. Uh as such, staff initiated a boundary review uh process back in May of twenty twenty one uh to establish the catchment for the school. Uh we established a boundary review committee uh consisting of parent representatives uh from the South Milton area. We had our first uh committee meeting on June twenty second uh twenty twenty one, and the committee reviewed the data and selected two options uh to present uh to the community for feedback. Uh we also had a virtual public meeting was held uh by staff on September sixteenth, twenty twenty one uh to um and we, uh as staff presented the options, uh we requested feedback from the uh community on those two options. Um the feedback came in, uh it was fifty four percent neutral or in support of option number one uh and sixty seven or seventy six percent favored option number one as well over option number two. Um I can note that uh most of the negative feedback that was uh received on this uh on this uh boundary recommendation uh was around the uh the use of the Milton number ten uh uh school building um for the for secondary school use uh until our new high school is built in Southeast Milton. Um so a lot of the comments were circulated or circled around that uh that topic. Um unfortunately, the topic is really out of uh out of the scope of this uh school boundary review. Um and trustees already passed a a motion uh which was the recommendation uh from the Milton Secondary uh School Boundary Review Committee uh back in November twenty twenty, uh which said that we would use uh the Milton number ten elementary school to house secondary school kids uh until such time that the our new Milton number three or St. Ceteri uh high school building is completed, uh which is, uh that process is still ongoing, as trustees know. Uh so the School Boundary Committee uh met again on uh October thirteenth, twenty twenty one, uh and they confirmed option number one as their recommendation to bring forward here tonight. Uh and option number one is shown in appendix B of your package tonight. Um you can see it, uh if you can, maybe Rosie or Rivers Control can scroll down uh to the map to the end here. Um you can see here the uh current uh St. Scholastica Boundary is that entire is both the green and the pink area uh shown on your screen right now, uh but the recommended option uh from the Boundary Committee uh would be divide that uh area uh across Regional Road twenty five. Uh so only uh the green area to the left of Regional Road twenty five uh would continue to go to St. Scholastica and the area to the uh east of Regional Road twenty five uh would go to the new Milton number ten uh Catholic Elementary School. Uh so for next steps for this process, uh we would hear delegations and review the action report uh at the November sixteenth meeting. Uh and again, I want to thank uh uh the parent reps on this uh School Boundary Committee. Uh again, like uh like I think it was trustee Duarte mentioned just a few minutes ago, uh we get a lot of the same people on these uh Boundary Committees, and it's a big time commitment for them. Uh so thanks to everybody who contributed on this. Again, a very cordial, very respectful uh and very dedicated team uh working through this process. Uh and happy to take any questions that trustees might have tonight. I'll have a check in the uh in the participant list. We may have some of the uh some of the parent reps on on tonight as well. So um as trustees are thinking about the questions, I can, I'll have a look through there as well.
Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo what Superintendent Merrick said. The it's been great to participate uh in this uh boundary review meeting, and I want to say thanks once again to the parents who have taken their time to attend this meetings and have great discussions. I have not heard anything negative from the community out there, and uh and the the Boundary Review Committee has taken care of all the concerns and uh feedback that you've received. So so thank you so much for the great job done, and thank you for the talk.
Uh thank you. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I'll be brief. I also want to acknowledge and recognize uh the effort that's gone into this. Um the staff and the and the parent participants in both Oakville and Milton, obviously. I am going to take this opportunity to ask a question that um slipped my mind when we were having the discussion in Oakville. I'm assuming that these boundary reviews, the this the were done um considering all of the elements that impact that are uh impacted um including including the uh French program, which um we're looking to commit to or we have committed to. Is that a fair assumption? For both Oakville and Milton?
Uh Superintendent Merrick, would you, you said you were on the uh on the French uh French Immersion Boundary Review too. I'm sure you could add context to that?
Yeah, thank thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Uh we we did have a lot of back and forth at both committees, and some of the people that sat on on this one also sat on the on the French uh committee as well. So uh there was a lot of back and forth in consideration of both. Um we even had talks uh internally about running them both together. Uh but uh um I I would say that the Milton number ten uh setting up a new boundary for a school is is much simpler um than the the French Immersion one. Uh so for that reason, we tried to keep them separate, um just to not complicate things or make things more complex. Um I think with this one, we had two committee meetings uh with the French Immersion one for Milton. We had nine committee meetings. So um you can see the kind of the level of complexity uh just through the number of meetings that we had, but uh uh definitely had considerations in there and uh and we, you know, looked at that as part of the numbers as well.
Trustee De Rosa, do you have a follow up?
Uh yes, Mr. Chair. I think I heard a a yes in that answer. That French has been a key component of the discussion of these boundary reviews with a view to um satisfy and expand the program moving forward. That's what I think I've heard.
Uh yes, I can comment. I was on both. Uh I witnessed both boundary reviews and uh quite extensive and um uh there is an accommodation plan for the next three to five years that will serve our community well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Trustee Tomasi, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Um I guess this question can go to either Superintendent Merrick or Senior Manager of Planning Services, Mr. Vidovic. Um insofar as our enrollment projections um that we received back in twenty nineteen uh which looked forward, uh I believe it was a ten year uh cycle, where are we today uh with enrollment projections? Are we below what we projected? Are we higher than what we projected?
Uh Superintendent Merrick, uh would you take this or should Bronco take this?
Yeah, I I'm not I'm not sure if we're looking at for, you know, the entire board or uh or or just for the Milton number ten community. Uh but I could I could put the uh the link to all the data for the Milton number ten Elementary School uh Boundary Committee that we're talking about right here. Uh I can put that link in the chat room uh here, and then uh uh all the trustees will have access to the all the projections uh that came out of this Boundary Review Committee.
Trustee Tomasi, you have a follow up?
Um okay, so let me sort of clarify my question. So we had made projections in Milton uh which would impact the whole community there of how we saw enrollment go uh for the next ten years. My question was fairly specific. Are we meeting the target? Are we below the target? Or are we above the targeted enrollment numbers that were presented to the board?
And what's your, what's your baseline year again? We'll have to look that up and uh and send that to you.
Um, well, uh the document that you prepared and and presented to the board back in May twenty nineteen spoke to a ten year projections. Within those projected numbers, uh the enrollment, if we look at the year twenty twenty one, which was impacted by COVID, and now twenty twenty two, are we in keeping with what we projected? Are we below what we projected? Or are we neutral?
Superintendent Merrick?
Yeah, so we we present enrollment projections every year to the board. So uh if you're looking to compare the May twenty nineteen uh board report that came to the board with and 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 compare September twenty twenty one numbers in that report uh versus what we actually have in this September twenty twenty one, uh we can do that, but we don't have those numbers uh prepared as part of the Milton number ten uh Catholic Elementary School Boundary Review Committee report.
So point of clarification. So you can't tell me whether we've exceeded those projections or not?
Yeah, that that wasn't part of my preparation for this uh for this uh uh report here right now. So we can take that offline and get that information for you, trustee Antomasi.
Thank you.
Uh thank you. If there's uh no other trustees that would like to speak to it, I would like to uh echo Vice Chair Duarte's sentiments. Um a lot of this the same uh people that were on the uh French Immersion Boundary Review were on this Boundary Review. Um always a very cordial, committed uh group that comes up with uh fair solutions for the whole community. Um we're we're in a very, very top spot in Milton over the next three to five years with the uh the slow response and approvals to proceed to build. Um so we will have, definitely will have some challenges ahead of us, and uh we'll have to get creative trying to to resolve some of those. Uh uh trustee De Rosa, I see your hand up?
Mr. Chair, my apologies. I hope you'll allow me just a very simple question. Uh mental lapse is here, but um when is Burlington Boundary Review coming up?
For French Immersion?
Yep.
Uh I'm not sure if that's scheduled. Uh Superintendent Merrick, I'm not sure if you have that answer.
Sorry, I was, I broke.
Is that the only reason, is that the only reason we would do a Boundary Review in Burlington? French?
Sorry, sorry, can you repeat the question? I I broke up there for me. Your your first.
I seem to recall Superintendent Merrick that uh the Boundary Review was scheduled, albeit um later than the others, was scheduled as well. Um are we anticipating to do a Boundary Review uh in in Burlington, whether for French alone or for any other reason?
Yeah, sorry. Um wh- when we looked at the French Immersion uh kind of plan across the board, uh across all the regions of the board, um the the two key areas that were identified as potentially needing a Boundary Review were primarily Milton, which was kind of an urgent need, uh and the second one was Oakville as well. Um and and Burlington, we thought we could handle for, you know, the the foreseeable future uh at its current location, just due to the uh the demand at that point. Um but I think where we are, where we're at right now, we're okay for, you know, kind of the next uh the next couple of years, but um we've just wrapped up, or actually, I shouldn't say that. We have, we still have to vote on the uh the Milton French Immersion Boundary Review at our next board meeting. And we still have to vote on the Milton number ten one that we just reviewed tonight here. It's a staff report. Um those will get voted on at our next uh board meeting. Uh but we're on the uh kind of on the precipice here of of finalizing about five boundaries that we've done in the last year. Um so once we finish that off, uh we'll get on with uh looking at our our next uh uh round of boundary reviews and what what are required. Uh and trustees will see that obviously anything we would initiate as as in the way of a Boundary Review uh would come back to the board uh for initiation. So uh I know Oakville uh is one we'll have to look at, uh French Immersion there. Uh and I don't think we need to look at Burlington, but uh as we kind of clean up these boundary reviews and and look at uh the future, uh we'll get on with that.
Thank you. Trustee De Rosa, do you have a follow up?
Uh just a comment, and I'll 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 close off with that. Um you know, in the discussion of French, the French Immersion program, the Boundary Review reviews were prominent in the discussions because we hadn't had an opportunity to do them. We didn't know what it looked like. And somewhat that it sort of uh we went easy on commitments uh to French Immersion. Now we've got two of them behind it, behind us. We know what the picture is. Um I'm just wondering um what the situation with respect to French Immersion in Burlington will be, because their capacity, if I recall, and I haven't looked at the numbers for a while, but there uh didn't have, uh they were in good shape from a capacity standpoint. So as I'm listening to the conversation, I'm expecting that the French Immersion uh discussion when it comes up will not be hampered by the Boundary Reviews, primarily because we've done two of them, and there's less need to do one in Burlington. So um that's my state of mind right now. Yeah, if I'm off base, please tell me here.
Uh no, I think I think uh Superintendent Merrick commented that they'll review it, and if one is required, we'll do it. And at this point, um based on the other um uh reviews we've been doing, I don't think they have that analysis, but uh if it's required, we definitely will do it. Um we're now can move on to item, uh thank you, Superintendent Merrick. We'll move on to item nine point three. HCDSV Student Trustees. Director Daley, you have the floor?
Uh thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Um I did uh afford to trustees this afternoon uh legal opinion that came about as a resolution that was passed at the October nineteenth, twenty twenty one regular board meeting. Uh so all trustees have that legal opinion for their information.
Uh trustees, I know that it was um, we didn't have a lot of time to review it, but we do have it. So if there's any questions, trustee De Rosa, I see your hand up?
Um, Mr. Chair, uh with respect to the effort that's gone into getting this opinion, uh one must clarify that at least I got to see it fifteen minutes before the actual meeting itself, and uh at least I'm speaking for myself. That is not, uh and it wasn't distributed uh much. Uh it was almost distributed at the same time, but I took a look at it. So with all due respect, um you know, a cursory read of an important item like this is uh we were hardly afforded the time to digest it, to consider it, and um to consider it properly. So um I just want to let me, let three hundred phones in. My apologies. I just want to make sure that that point is well understood. Because if we are going to be making decisions tonight, I don't feel that really I've had, I've been afforded time to really consider this issue properly. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. I would agree and I think it is unfortunate just based on the timing and when we received it. I think it is agreeable to everybody. We can agree to bring it back to the next board meeting under consensus. But we do have some other hands up and maybe we can deal with that at the end of this discussion. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to say that I don't know about the other student trustees, but I didn't receive the report. So I was just wondering if Director Daley could forward that to me.
Director Daley?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I just, and my apologies to our three student trustees. As trustee DeRosa noted, the legal opinion went out late this afternoon. And I apologize for not including you on that email. I just sent it to you right now. So again, my apologies for that.
Thank you, Director Daley. So if it is agreeable to everybody, I think it would be good if we can bring this staff report back to our next board meeting where we have more time for everybody to review it and ask some questions. Is anybody opposed to that? Seeing that nobody is opposed, then that's what we'll do. We'll move on to the next item, which is 9.4 Secondary School Assessment Plan. Superintendent Crowell, you have the floor.
Evening and through you, Mr. Chair. And please provide a report to the Board of Trustees on secondary school assessment plans. The purpose of this report is to bring information to the Board of Trustees about secondary assessment and evaluation practices for schools opposing this year to support student achievement. I did include information from growing success at the start of this report for background information. And I did note as well what was shared at the last meeting, that it's been our practice for many years to have subject councils meet to the beginning of the year to determine the format of final assessments and ensure consistency across the system. We did share verbally, but I do have a summary of the final assessments for each subject area for grades nine through 12, as asked. Majority of our subjects and the majority of our courses did choose to go with a culminating performance task. We did have one course that felt, the grade 12 anatomy course, that felt it would be appropriate to have a written exam. So our school has been working diligently and collaborating, collaborating together to create quality culminating performance tasks. I do think it's important to talk a bit about what a culminating performance task is. I did share information with you last week about what a culminating performance task is. So it does allow students to demonstrate achievement of overall curriculum expectations. They're related to several or all achievement chart categories. So when I say that, I'm talking about knowledge, thinking, inquiry, communication, and application. They're meant to have high levels of engagement for students. So it's drawing on student interest, perhaps it's current events, but something that students are interested in and want to participate in. It allows some choice. It also allows students to enter the task at their level of achievement. It's an opportunity to integrate and demonstrate prior knowledge, understanding and skills, also allowing students to reflect and make connections. So we did speak to our schools. We did speak to our subject councils. We did ask for examples of what those culminating performance tasks look like. I did provide you a sample of the types of culinating activities that are going on throughout the board. I can give you a really concrete example. So if you look at something like a senior science course, we, those courses, so senior chemistry, for example, you know, a lot, the bulk of the instruction is around chemical reactions. So a culinating activity may have students look at chemical reactions that are used in combustion. So for example, those that drive engines, those that are used as fuel and those that produce greenhouse gases. So students may be asked to do a lab-based activity, use design theory to create an experiment, gather, analyze, and interpret data, do some research. And then combine with the information they've learned throughout the course to connect to larger societal issues such as global warming and environmental sustainability. You can even bring in the climate summit that's happening right now. There's also an opportunity to make connections to Catholic social teachings, stewardship of creation, global solidarity, an option for the poor and vulnerable. That's just one of many examples of what a culminating performance task can look like. They're often a combination of closed book and open book assessments. They often include a variety of knowledge questions that you typically find on a final exam, as well as problem-solving open-ended tasks. We did indicate as a priority this year with our schools, the importance of teaching test-taking strategies and study skills. And I would like to note that test-taking strategies is a broad, a broad sort of envelope that would include exam preparation. So I want to make sure that that's really clear, that when we're talking about test-taking strategies, it's what a student would need to know and to be able to do to be successful in a very simple test right up to a final exam. So we've been really explicit with schools to make sure they're helping students understand what they need to do to study effectively. So I provided a number of examples of the types of study skills that are being taught. I'll identify a few, you know, the importance of studying over time, including scheduling, chunking, and prioritization, explicit teaching and memorization skills, a focus on metacognition, which means what do we know about ourselves as learners? And what are some habits and skills we need to be, to develop to be further successful and avoid distractions? And some schools explicitly, they were teaching students how to avoid distractions by their phones, which I thought was pretty interesting. Stressing the importance of staying organized, time management, and also getting a really good understanding of what it is that they need to know and be able to demonstrate to be successful. So we talked about them reviewing the rubrics and success criteria before each task, how to prepare review sheets before assessments. In terms of test-taking strategies, again, I think it's important that students know how to respond to questions, how to use supporting facts, what they know, to be able to construct responses. Really explicit demonstrating to students how to answer multiple choice题 questions and the strategies that can be used. I provided a number of strategies there that schools are demonstrating. As well as with, well, with culminating performance tasks with an exam type or even a large unit test, there's often an expectation for students to have a written or an oral response. So helping students, but through modeling, to understand what the characteristics are of a strong written oral response. We've also asked students to participate in our senior-level courses. So those courses that have pathways going towards, due to the school closures that we've gone through. So we've been really explicit about making sure that they get an opportunity to know what, to know how to prepare for those, to have that experience. So again, tests and quizzes, including multiple choice questions, short and long answer questions in both paper, pencil, and online formats, as well as others such as lab activities or written responses. So I would really like to say that I feel very confident, the feedback that we got from schools and speaking to department heads and speaking to school administrators, that students will be given an opportunity to demonstrate what they know, what they're able to do, what they've learned, make connections beyond the course, the connections to the real world, and that they will be prepared for future pathways. So at this point, I don't have to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. On the speakers list, we have trustee Agnew, trustee Demossi, vice chair Duarte, trustee Oren Trumalta, trustee O'Brien, excuse me, and trustee Caraballo. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you so much and through you, Mr. Chair. And thank you very much, Superintendent Crowell. I personally, as well as I'm sure my fellow trustees, certainly appreciate the amount of detail that's got into the report. And I know that there has been many questions with respect to assessments, the type of assessments that were being done, how they were being applied, in what capacity they were being utilized. And so I really do appreciate, you can tell that a lot of thought and preparation has gone into the decisions that have been made around the assessments for this school year. The one question that I do have is there's, excellent job has been done here to, again, outline what we're doing to ensure that students understand the information, to assess that they understand the content, and, you know, that they're getting a really good grasp of the curriculum. What I haven't seen, or maybe I've missed it and I'm sorry, because there's a lot of information there. What I haven't seen is how we are specifically prepping them with respect to exams that, you know, we know they're not taking. And I'm not saying that they need to be taking those based on the assessment decisions that have been made. But what are we doing to actively help students who have never written an exam to know how to do that so that they can be prepared when they encounter that type of assessment down the road?
Crowell, you have the floor.
Sure. And through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the question, trustee Agnew. My background's a science teacher, so I was a high school science teacher. And when I was thinking about preparing students for the end, you know, what that final assessment would look like, I'd really want to make sure that they were getting lots of opportunities to have that type of experience throughout the year. Because we don't want to make, you know, have students all throughout the year having one experience and then at the end having an exam that looks completely different than what they're used to. So when I say we're teaching test-taking strategies, what I'm saying is we're preparing them throughout the course for the types of assessments that you're talking about. The types that require them to, you know, to summarize information, to study and memorize, to be able to make connections, to really, you know, apply that knowledge. So when I say we're teaching how to answer test questions, that's the type of thing that I would be doing to prepare them for a unit test. It's also the type of thing I would be doing that would be helpful for them on an exam. And I really like, I want to be clear when I say that our unit, like a unit test in math, a unit test in science, is a small exam on its own. You know, you're looking at probably more questions, but the structure, the format, they're largely, I would be disappointed if my students were surprised when they saw the exam because they'd seen it all year for me as a teacher. And I know for sure in talking to science teachers, talking to math teachers, talking to other departments, they're getting those large-scale tasks going on throughout the year.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up?
I do. Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. And that's great. Thanks very much, Superintendent Crowell. So one other question that I did have then, as a follow-up to that, would be, you know, outside of what is transpiring in the classroom with respect to preparation and that's, you know, that skill set. Is there or has there been plans, and I think I've seen it previously, to provide perhaps additional opportunities for students to learn about exam-taking? You know, a little bit more if they will. I know that many of the schools do peer tutoring as an example. And I'm not saying that's the same thing, but we provide that additional support or resource for students who need that. And I'm just wondering if there is an ability for us to provide students with some exam-writing workshops? You know, again, given that they just don't have that particular piece going on. For those students who may be concerned that they are missing a piece on that specific exam prep and not ignoring at all what you've said about the unit test or the way that that is constructed, but just for those students who specifically associate, you know, taking exams with a specific approach to that, is there an opportunity for us to provide that for them in some way?
It's a good question. Again, through you, Mr. Chair. So it's a good question, trustee Agnew, something that we've thought about and talked about a little bit. I do know that schools offer extra help. They offer it regularly, especially for courses like math, science, English. There are other opportunities like the water and math contest, like those type of external exams, students that are interested. I might want to take that one away and think about it a little bit more. But what we would, what I would like to be doing anyway, regardless, is talking to teachers after Quad One, right? And talking to students after Quad One and get a sense of, you know, so that's something that those conversations will be having with school administrators. I'd like to get some student voice in there as well to get a better sense of what their experience has been. So I guess the short answer is if there's the demand for that, we'll find a way to meet that demand.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Demossi, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent Crowell, so universities hand down certain expectations in terms of what is expected of institutions such as Alton Catholic Discreet Stew Board in preparing students for a university. Are we meeting those expectations? Do we know what those expectations are? Is there any discourse with our university partners on what they would like to see in light of the pandemic? In light of the fact that we're rolling out a different program or a different means of preparing for secondary or for university education or college for that matter?
Superintendent Crowell?
Sure. And just to be clear, trustee Demossi, I would, yeah, I do agree with you that it would be helpful to have those conversations. Our teachers, our school board, we have to follow the mandate set by the Ministry of Education, which is different than the ministry that, you know, the universities and colleges have to report to. We have to teach our curriculum. But I have been part of curriculum writing teams that, working for the ministry. And there is consultation with colleges and universities among many other stakeholders. And those conversations do happen when our school curriculum, when our ministry curriculum documents are written to ensure that students are the know, have the knowledge and skills to be prepared for first-year college and university courses. With that said, I think ongoing conversations with colleges and universities would be helpful to understand what the changing landscape is. Because as is noted in previous conversations around this table, assessment looks a little bit different in colleges and universities too, based on the experience that we're hearing from students that have left us and gone on to college and university due to a COVID. So I would say that's something we would definitely like to pursue going forward.
Trustee Demossi, you have a follow-up?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So you've alluded to the fact that there is conversations and there are meetings between the ministry, those responsible for university or college education, and for those who are responsible for school boards that prepare students for that. It's my understanding that there was a document that was forthcoming from the ministry whereby they were establishing basic requirements for students entering various fields so that when the admissions officers were taking in students from, from school boards, they would know, the guidance people would know what is required of them or what kind of preparation would be needed in this new or post-COVID situation that we're in.
Superintendent Merrick or Director Daley, maybe you can answer that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, trustee Demossi, thanks for noting that. If that collaboration is coming, it hasn't come yet. One of the things that's difficult to, I would say, to kind of mimic at the secondary level is the, you know, the three-hour exam that's worth 60 or 50% of your final mark. That's, you know, 150 multiple-choice questions. That's not an assessment practice that we would use, nor would we believe in. So that one's a bit, that's difficult to prepare students for that kind of high-stakes environment. And that being said, different universities and faculties within different universities also have somewhat different assessment practices that really range kind of all over the map. So certainly in preparing students for post-secondary, if a student had a particular destination in mind, whether it was by university or probably better by faculty, that would be something that we could help students take a look at what some of those expectations are. I mean, universities are pretty open in terms of posting what their assessment and evaluation practices in a specific course. So in, you know, first-year physics course or first or second-year history course, that information is fairly readily available. It's also interesting to note that most Ontario universities, anyway, the test-taking or exam-writing skills that Superintendent Crowell mentioned in the report are the exact same sort of exam workshops or skill workshops that universities offer to their students as well.
Just a clarification question, a very short one, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please go ahead.
Do we know, are we keeping track in any shape, way, or form, how our students are progressing? Especially the last two cohorts, the last 21, 20 and 20 graduates from 2019 and 2020, 20? How they're making out in university? Because I am speaking to several, one of which is at Queen's and another one that's at Western. And actually, another one that's at Waterloo. And they're finding themselves somewhat overwhelmed, especially in the area of math, sciences, and even in English, they don't feel prepared and they feel that their, you know, their schoolmates are maybe better prepared and are not going through that steep learning curve. So there's a lot of anxiety there. And I'm just wondering whether you're getting any feedback along those lines from universities? Because I've also heard that there is a higher-than-usual dropout rate and that is that students are withdrawing simply because they do feel overwhelmed. and that is that students are withdrawing simply because they do feel overwhelmed. So whether it's a case of being prepared or whether it's a case of mental health issues, the percentage is, is increasing.
Director Daley?
Yeah, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, there's no doubt, Trustee Intomasi, I would say it's probably a combination of those factors. I think we've probably all seen reports in the media regarding some of the, some of those challenges you've talked about for students who are studying at post-secondary. In terms of how we can track how students perform, it really is, it's a little bit challenging because it does really depend on students, us reaching out to grads and them reaching back. Universities don't kind of share that information, either than in kind of a disaggregated or aggregated sort of way. But certainly, I think at post-secondary institutions over the last number of years, I would say over the last five years, more than, and maybe even a little bit longer than that, they've certainly put more of a focus on student wellness, student mental health, helping students through those exam periods, much more different than, than, you know, thirty years ago when, when, when I was studying at university. So I, I think it would speak to those combination of factors that you mentioned.
Thank you. Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I get to ask a question of Superintendent Kroll. And yeah, I look at this report, Superintendent Kroll, and it's great. There's some good information here, something that I did not think about. And I like the report. However, this particular report came out from, as a result of a motion. And I do not see the cross-reference of that motion, nor does it talk about some of the items pointed out by my colleague, Trustee Agnew, about exam prep and the additional help that's there to help our students. As well, it does not talk about help for grades nine and ten, the motion talks about. Now, I'm all about customer service, and I think if there's a motion here and we need to stick to that motion, I would like to request that we reference everything in here and bring it back to the next meeting with all details. And I'm sure everybody's going to be happy with that.
Director Daley would like to comment to that?
Yeah, just, just to note, because trustees might not have the motion in front of them. The motion that was passed unanimously carried at the last board meeting was how students are currently being helped to develop exam-writing skills and for staff to outline final assessments plans by subject matter for grades nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. So I think as Superintendent Kroll did talk about the skills necessary for test-taking and study skills, I think are transferable to exam-writing skills. I think the superintendent also let trustees know assessment plans in subject areas. He lists all of the various departments, and those are the formats of final assessments for grades nine to twelve. So if there's additional information that trustees are seeking, I, I think we need a little bit more specifics on that. Because I would, I would contend that the report that was brought back does speak to those elements in the motion.
Vice Chair Duarte, you have a follow-up?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Typically, when you get a report back from staff, it references the motion. It's absent in this report, and I can see that in the report, as well as the details of the exam prep that we talked about, as well as grade nine and ten, some of the details there. And I'd be happy to see that if this needs a motion, I'm happy to put a motion to bring it back. But I'm sure staff can easily take care of this without any motion. So, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to know if I need to put a motion or if staff can bring back this report, if something like this.
Director Daley?
I'm not sure no motion is necessary, but I, I think I would like Trustee Ward or other trustees to be clear. When you say more details, if you could let us know exactly what those details are, so we don't, we don't bring back a report that we need to bring back a third time. So either you can do it now or a quick email would be, would be fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I don't speak at a turn here. But in the, in the interest of consistency, I think a motion would be appropriate. Thank you, that's my view.
So we cancel, the solution provided, which Vice Chair Duarte was agreeable, was to forward specific requests for information. Once we have that, if we feel we need to create a new motion, I think we can do that. But I think this would suffice. Yes, Vice Chair Duarte?
I'm comfortable with what assurance Director Daley has given and having that.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Hearn-Turnato, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Kroll. Just so I'm clear, assessments that are given in any form throughout our education system are used, you know, in different subjects to, to get a confirmation of understanding from our students, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would agree with that, Trustee O'Hearn-Turnato. The other thing, just to note, and it's been said at a few meetings as well, that the primary purpose of assessment is to improve student learning. So really, it is, it's, and sometimes I give the analogy that's helpful. And if you think about what a good coach does, right, for a sport, a good coach is someone who gives really good feedback in terms of helping with skill development, puts students in practice situations where they, where they can practice the skills and gain the abilities that they'll need to be successful in a game-type environment. And that's what a really good teacher does too, right? Gives students feedback ongoing throughout the year, gives them opportunities to practice, to fail, right? To figure out how they can do better before they're put in a final-assessment-type situation.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnato, do you have a follow-up?
I do, to Superintendent, through you, Mr. Chair, through Superintendent Kroll. So let's, let's take it home. So let's say hypothetically, you have a child, your own child is in grade eleven or in grade twelve right now. Would you feel a hundred percent confident that that child is ready to go to, to a university or college at this time?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. Based on the conversations I've had with subject councils, based on the conversations I've had with teachers, with department heads, with, with school administrators, I do feel confident, and I'm confident in our staff to be able to prepare them for it. You know, our teachers are university grads, our teachers are, that are teaching those senior-level university courses have taught those for years. They're not going to sell our students short, ever. I feel very confident in our staff.
Thank you for that answer, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Kroll. Well, thank you, Superintendent Kroll, for such a comprehensive yet concise report. And I'm just looking at it, so just for clarification, only Phys Ed will have an exam? This, this tester, whatever, Octimester, correct?
This Quadmaster, yes, that's correct. And what I would, what I would say, Trustee O'Brien, if I could, was that's the only course in which they'll have a formal exam, like, like a student might have experienced. I am confident, based on the conversations that I've had, if you look at the information I share in the report, a lot of culminating activities are going to include that kind of timed assessment, closed book, knowledge-based, you know, that we would typically, if you were thinking about the words that describe an exam, that that's what it would be, that they're going to have that experience. They just, they're doing it as part of a larger culminating performance task.
Okay, and pre-COVID, was this the case, where all these courses giving culminating performance tasks?
So, yes, all of our courses are giving culminating performance tasks, many of them had exams. I would say the trend over time was to be moving away from exams, a traditional exam, like you and I would have experienced.
Okay, and do you see that, this, because of COVID, that before COVID, there was more exams, now there's just the one?
What I would say is, I would say going back to when I was in the classroom, which is long enough ago, I guess, that there was a general sense that the types of assessments that are knowledge-based only don't give a true picture of what a student truly knows, what they've learned, what they're able to do with, with what they've, with what they've picked up throughout the course.
And then, Mr. Kroll, I totally agree with that too, as a teacher myself. My question is, though, like, two years ago, there were exams, now there aren't, correct?
Correct.
So how did these subject councils arrive at that? I take it had something to do with COVID, am I wrong?
What I was, where I was going with this, though, just so that we're clear, was because we couldn't run formal exams during COVID, during that period from March to June 2020, schools put a lot of work into culminating performance tasks and a lot of thought into what that final assessment would look like. We're really pleased with the, with the tasks that they came up with. We're really pleased with the results systems generated and felt in many or most cases, it's a better picture of what the student did, and students ultimately performed better on it.
So what you're saying then, just to be clear, is COVID kind of helped these subject councils see a new way of evaluating?
I would say that's a fair statement.
Is there any other reason?
Trustee O'Brien, you're on about question six.
Okay.
We'll put you back in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Trustee Duarte for suggesting some extra details. But my question then is going to be a little bit looking forward. Oh, here, hang on, let me put on my camera. My question is going to be a bit looking forward as to the next year, 2022, 2023. And when would the subject councils be making decisions for that school year regarding final assessments and exams?
Superintendent Kroll?
So through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Carabella, those decisions are typically made at the beginning of the year. Obviously, there's been lots of conversation about assessment throughout the course of this year. It'll be an ongoing discussion throughout the year. We have a November PD date coming up, which will be focused on assessment in secondary schools. So I would say that there'll be ongoing conversations about assessment throughout the year in preparation for next year. Assuming we return back to a typical semester for next year, which I think is probably the general hope for most people, you could then take another look at, you know, does do formal exams as well as culminating activities make good sense in a typical semester as they have in the past? So what I would say is, those conversations would be ongoing this year, those final decisions would be made next year, in the beginning of next year, if we're following our typical practice.
Okay, so September 2022, you would be, have had the assessments of this year and the discussions of this year, and you'll be making decisions for the next school year, 2022, 2023, in September 2022.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have two trustees who haven't spoken yet. So up next, we have Trustee DeRosa, Trustee Mazri Amar, and then we have Trustee Intomasi and Trustee O'Brien. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I have a question about IB and AP. Are they writing exams or are they doing culminating activities, or a combination of both?
Director Daley?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So AP exam, and thanks for the question, Trustee DeRosa. AP exams are, will be written for students who choose to write them. No student has to write an AP exam. Students in grade twelve decide whether they want to challenge that exam or not. It's an externally administered exam. IB, the diploma program, this year, last year, they didn't do exams, maybe I'm going to throw it back to you, Jeff.
And I'll, sure, and I'll do my best, with apologies to Superintendent Cordero if I get this wrong. My understanding, please, I may be corrected by Superintendent Cordero when he comes, when he returns, is that IB exams will be going on this year. But I know that the decision to, to not write exams came later, sort of in the, in the winter and spring. So it's possible that that could change. But I believe that the current plan is to re-institute IB exams for this year.
Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. With respect to culminating and performance tasks, are they consistent across the board per type of course? Or is it to the discretion of the teacher?
Superintendent Kroll?
Sure, so through you, Mr. Chair, I would say they're not the same across the board. I know at subject councils, they talk about the types of culminating assessments, so that there are, I would say that they're having similar experiences. I also know that schools often will collaborate with other schools to write tasks that, and I know that that goes on regularly with our subject councils, where they may work together to address a course, maybe they need a bit of a refresh or an update or whenever there's new curriculum comes out, that's pretty common as far as.
Just one more follow-up, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind?
Yes, please go ahead.
This may be, may be an obvious question, but I'll ask it anyways. The culminating activities and the tests throughout the semester, I'm assuming are meeting ministry requirements and standards, is that correct?
Certainly. Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Mazri Amar, you have the floor?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So in my experience, usually culminating's are open book. So I was just wondering if teachers are allowed to have a part of the culminating that is closed book?
Superintendent Kroll?
Yeah, that is something that they can make a decision about, for sure.
Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up?
No, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor?
Two-part, through you, Mr. Chair, two-part question to anyone that is in a position to answer. Has the enrollment for returning students in grade twelve, has that increased or decreased?
I assume, Director Daley or Bronco?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Our secondary enrollment is up. I'd have to dig into the numbers to see grade twelve specifically, Trustee Intomasi. I might be able to do it while we're, while we're.
Okay, then in the meantime, I'll do my, my follow-up. Have the grades also been affected by the COVID element? Have they gone up, have they come down?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So the last time that I looked at grades overall, it was actually last year's grades compared to the year before, and they were relatively similar. I'd have to pull my notes on it, up as opposed to down, in general terms. But we did take a look at that, but I, I don't have that at my fingertips either, Trustee Intomasi.
Yeah, could, if you do get that information, or when you do, and if you were to share it with everyone, what subjects were most affected if they went down? And what subject benefited from the manner in which we test now?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, and thanks for the clarification. I'm not sure if we could make a connection between how we test now and whether marks went up or down. I, I think last year, it's a little bit difficult to kind of suss out why students may have done better or not as good based on the nature of the school year. But, but I do understand that, I do understand the question.
Yeah, I'm really more focusing on, so if you have maths, you know, algebra as opposed to, you know, advanced math, or physics as opposed to chemistry, as opposed to other subject matter. I'm just wondering if there has been an increase in marks, where it took place? Is it in the social sciences, history, English, and so on? Or is it maths or sciences? That's really my query.
Thank you. Did you have an additional question, Trustee Intomasi?
I do not.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Kroll. I'll just continue my line of questioning a bit. So we were in COVID, we, we found that a performance culminating task, culminating performance task did evaluate students better than a formal exam, which is great. I'm just wondering, have the universe, did the universities make that same discovery during COVID that you know of, Superintendent Kroll?
Well, I can say a couple of things. I can say anecdotally that, that we were certainly not the only board that came to this conclusion. So we did see some, a number of other boards around us that came to similar conclusions when they made their decisions this year. Duff and Peel is an example of a board that's nearby us. Some boards actually did away with final assessments completely, from what we've heard, that they went entirely with termwork, which is interesting. What I would say is, and it would be anecdotally, so hearing from, from parents of kids that you're in upper-year courses, that they've changed their assessment practices to. Certainly, as, as you get into those upper-year courses, where student class sizes approximate what we would have in a high school class, you would certainly say that they're using oral exams, portfolios, seminars, case studies, and getting away from a traditional exam, as Director Daley identified earlier.
Okay, but I asked you about universities, do they make that same discovery?
I was speaking about universities, yes.
Oh, you were, okay, I apologize. So you feel that they've made this switch as well, and there will probably be less exams at university, in other words?
I don't know if I'm qualified. I don't know if I'm qualified to answer that question.
Okay, I won't hold it to you. But so you're feeling it was kind of an overall discovery between universities and schools? My concern is if the universities have not made that discovery, will there be a difficult period of adjustment for our students once they leave our system and go to university? Can you speak to that?
Sure, trustee O'Brien, if you're asking my opinion, and again, I'm reflecting a little bit of my own teaching as well as what the conversations that I have with educators. And I've seen your science and math as example of the types of courses that you may be talking about. The types of experiences that our kids are having in terms of large unit tests, the type of, the type of assessments that we use, partially because we know that the types of assessments that are used in universities, something about things like multiple choice questions. I know when I was a teacher, I used those in my senior level courses because one of my students got used to them. I wanted to understand the strategies, as I outlined earlier in the report, that can be used to do those types of questions. How to prepare for them, how to, so I guess what I'm saying is, I'm hearing the same things from educators now when I ask them about what they're doing in those university level courses. They're preparing kids not only to meet the expectations of our courses, but also for what the realities of a first year university assessment might be.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Kroll.
Director Daly, did you want to, no? Trustee Intomasi, I'm not sure if you have your hand up again?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to, thank you, Superintendent Kroll, and thank you for answering all those questions. We appreciate it. We'll move on to information items. 10.1, student trustee update. Trustees Bowie, Mazri Amar, and Tokiwa, please present your report.
Yeah, and thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'll be starting by presenting our achieving section. So we recently had our first October regular Senate meeting, wherein our senators from across the board signed up to join the standing committees for the year as were established in our constitution, which we talked about in a previous student trustee update. As well, our committee chairs were elected, and we'd like to congratulate all the chairs and co-chairs who were elected to lead. We're very excited to see what type of leadership they'll take on throughout the year. There currently stands 13 senators on the environmental stewardship committee, three on the Catholic faith in action committee, 18 on our student wellbeing committee, 18 on the student achievement and leadership committee, 10 on the special education committee, and 17 on our equity and inclusion committee. We believe that this is a good highlight of the concerns of our senators for the year and what they feel most passionate about because senators were encouraged to join committees based on what issue they'd like, what issues they'd like to see tackled in their schools. The final draft of the student senate constitution was also sent out to all senators and has been adopted for the remainder of the year. The document has been attached for trustees' information if you would like to read. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me. And then if you could just scroll down, Rosie. Yeah, and then another certain thing that we've seen in our schools, certainly from our own experience and what we've heard from our senators, is that our secondary students are hard at work preparing for their final assessments, many of which are already in process. As this quad semester comes to a close, stress levels on students and staff are high, and many are looking forward to quad semester two. So I'm sure Alicia and Gabriella, both of their culminating tasks, as I know, have started. Mine are starting this week, and I know that a lot of students are sort of getting into that exam mindset and the final assessment mindset, where it's sort of a mad dash to the end of the quad semester, and many of our students and staff are currently experiencing that. So we're definitely getting to the close of the quad semester and things are ramping up in speed.
I'll be presenting the believing portion. So as liturgies and masses are starting to happen in school virtually and in person, we're reminded about the great gifts that our faith gives us. These are also great reminders to be grateful that we're all safe and able to attend liturgies and masses which connects us closer to Christ. Many schools around our border are having food drives to help people that are in need in our communities. Some schools have even made a competition to see which grade and get the most cans.
And I will be presenting the belonging portion. Sorry, our students, senators and lead senators were asked to participate in a review of policy number II-39 progressive discipline and safety in schools. They, along with the other students from their schools selected by lead senators, will be participating in this discussion this week to help to provide student perspective on the policy. Additionally, the student senate has been discussing a potential new initiative geared towards our elementary schools surrounding equity inclusion. In conversation with the equity inclusion, inclusive education steering committee, however, this project is still in the conception phase. Most recently, the main concerns we've received from student senate consist of a decline in student mental health as the year progresses, disinterest and lack of engagement in our schools, an increased use of hate speech and discriminatory language by students, issues with connection and wifi in our schools, lunches being too short for students to safely leave the school. When we asked our student senators to rate the level of community engagement in their schools, the highest answer was a three out of 10.
Thank you, trustees. We'll open up the floor to questions. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, student trustees. Your reports are always so good and so, so comprehensive. Quick question to trustee Bowie. Under the achievement pillar, I don't know a lot about student senate, but I'd like to know, is there a grade point average that student senators must keep in order to maintain their position?
No, there isn't. The requirement for student senators to be able to uphold their duties consists of solely their duties as student senators, which do encourage, which do encourage engagement in their school communities. But as we do like to hear student, we do like to hear student perspective from a variety of senators, from a variety of academic, athletic, extracurricular backgrounds. Some students who may be, you know, international students, some students who maybe have higher GPAs and have lower GPAs. We do not have any requirements of the sort. We, neither do we have any requirements for students to be on a role or in any other specific leadership clubs. It's just those things are encouraged.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow up?
No, thank you very much.
Trustee Agnew, you have the floor?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks very much for the report. As always, the information that you bring forward is always so important for us to hear and to see. I'm not going to lie, after seeing the report earlier under the belonging area, I haven't been able to stop thinking about the issues that have been highlighted with respect to the concerns that have come forward. Rosie, can you just scroll down if you don't mind? And so, thank you so much. And so I know, you know, that there's been some discussions with respect to some initiative that you're looking at. But you know what, when I look at, you know, our community engagement being rated in the schools, the highest of three out of 10, like that's extremely disappointing. It's disheartening. So, you know, and again, looking at, you listed some really important impactful things here. A decline in student mental health, which we know could probably be for a variety of reasons, given what we've been through over the last little while, but the increase of use of hate speech and discriminatory language by students. You know, like what's, you know, what's happening there? Are the programs that we have implemented just not reaching the audience? Do you have suggestions on, on, you know, first steps of ideas on how to turn this around? Because, you know, those are really, those are really upsetting.
Trustee Agnew, your question is to the student trustees?
Yeah, it would be to the student trustees. I mean, they're the ones that hear it. They're the ones that get the feedback. Yeah, I want to know what they're thinking, what they think somebody could be doing to turn, you know. I mean, I look at connectivity with wifi, that's a tech issue. That could be certainly be addressed. You know, lunches being too short, obviously an issue, but that's what we're under right now with respect to, you know, public health. But, you know, when I look at the discriminatory language and hate speech, that's an issue. Decline in student mental health, that's an issue. And disinterest and lack of engagement in our schools, you know, what's going on? So I'd love to hear from our student trustees on those three pieces maybe specifically.
Student trustees, I know that Vice Chair Duarte and Director Daly and I meet every two weeks with our trustees. And one, one topic that they brought up was, which I found was quite interesting, was putting, putting the fun back in the school community, you know, obviously going through a global pandemic and all of the changes and restrictions have, have seen an impact. Maybe, maybe some of our trustees can speak to that?
Yeah, I don't know if Alicia, since she presented it, she wants to go. But I know specifically within my school and what I'm hearing from students in my region is that it is, I would say, largely concentrated in our grade nine and 10 students. So I know that what we've seen is grade 11 and 12 students who are coming back to in-person learning, who have had that previously in sort of a more normal situation. They're very engaged in the school. They're looking to get involved. They're looking to participate. And then the true issue that we're seeing is in our grade nine and 10 students who have a decline in participation in extracurriculars and school events and stuff like that. And I think that's largely just because it's been two years. Some of them have never had a regular high school experience or even, you know, grade seven or grade eight year in full. So we have a lot of students who are adjusting to the responsibility of high school for the first time, who are, who are not settling in well with that. We have students who have been disconnected from their potential friends and from what it feels like to be in a school community. So I think our student councils have been working very hard to provide events for students to get, take, participate in. And we're hoping that with time, those things will change. But I know a specific issue within my community is on our grade nine and 10 lunches, we have a lot of grade nine and 10 students who are being very disrespectful within our community, who are leaving garbage everywhere, who are harassing community members. And that's definitely an issue that we're dealing with in addition to, again, an increase in hate speech and discriminatory language. And I think, again, it's that feeling of disconnect from the community. And it's a feeling of them not being able to, or not having the experience of responsibility yet and not having that prior knowledge and prior, not being prior involved in their elementary schools as much as, say, my year, who graduated grade eight in a full year and who had part of the grade nine year in sort of a normal school community. We have that framework for, for what it feels like to be in high school, and a lot of these students don't have that.
Are any other of the trustees want to?
I had a follow up, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Sorry. And thank you for that clarity. You know, and certainly I do understand, I also have children in our secondary system. And so I do understand, you know, Director or Chairman Murphy, what you had said about fun and then needing to come up with some things to engage. I think where I'm really struggling is, you know, sort of that, again, the decline in student mental health and the increase of use of hate speech and discriminatory language. I don't think there's any place for that. And so, again, thanks so much for that clarification, trustee Bowie. And perhaps, you know, in another report you bring forward, maybe if you are able to list some ideas or some of the things that, that are being worked on or some of the things that are happening in our particular schools. And, you know, anything that we could be supporting or anything that, you know, our senior leadership could be supporting to help bring this three out of 10 up would be much appreciated.
Thank you. Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor?
Sorry, I was hoping I would be able to speak on it, or is that?
I was too quick on the draw. Please go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to add on a little bit. Just kind of touching on what Chair Murphy had been saying about putting the fun back in school. One of the kind of ideas were, it's putting the fun back in school. It sounds cheesy, but I think it is really important. Because I think the decline in mental health, the increase in hate speech, the disinterest and lack of engagement in our schools, I think they're all issues that are really tied together. There's not just the one aspect of high school, which is learning and preparing for university. I think there's also that aspect of social and development and connecting with the community on the larger scale. And unfortunately, we just haven't been able to do that in that last two years. I definitely do agree with Katie. I'm seeing a lot of bigger issues with the grade nines and tens. I took photos for the nine, 10s, 11s, and 12s for Halloween for our student council, and the difference is just, it's astounding. And I think that there is a really important dynamic between the juniors, senior students. And the issue is they're not being able to intermingle with each other. There's a lot of isolation going on. And I think that having events and getting the schools involved and engaged, that's going to play a really big role in them developing and just feeling like they're belonging to a community. And I think that comes, it brings that level of respect that they have for the school and the community and for each other. One of the things I really wanted to do in our school, and unfortunately, we weren't able to do it in the fall, but we're hoping to in the spring, was a pep rally. I was hoping that Mr. Daly and the senior staff would be able to actually send out a memo with some guidance for what large scale gatherings would be able to have and sort of outdoor as well as maybe indoor, if that's a possibility, now that we've kind of opened up a little bit more with the government, and maybe that can help some of our schools plan some things. Safely, of course, that get the schools, the students more involved and just feel like they're a part of a community, because I think if they're proud to go to the school, then they'll respect the people at the school, they'll respect the school. And I think that just makes everyone overall happier and feel more included in the environment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Tokiwa, for your input. Up next, we have Vice Chair Duarte.
Looks like some study initiatives there. A couple of observations here. Go back to that page, those items. Yeah, thank you for making this report again, and it's, it's good. I look at this and there are some of the items there which are really procedural and could have been really fixed quickly, like the wifi issues and stuff like that. Was wondering if, if this issue was raised with the schools where the problem has been occurring? Number one, and number two is that there are some items which are really policy oriented where trustees get involved it. Was wondering if you have managed to have some conversations around that and had some discussions and bring some ideas to the table here? So if the student trustees could elaborate a little more about that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you. Student trustees, could you have any input that you can give us on those questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I caught all of the questions that Vice Chair Duarte asked. But I know that we are definitely working on tackling some of these things within the student senate, especially within our subcommittees. Facilitating a return to school, facilitating more, you know, education for students surrounding things like hate speech and discriminatory language in our schools is definitely a big passion of our senators, and it's something that we will be working on. In terms of issues with connection and wifi in our schools, I think it's, I think students have been bringing them up with their administrations at their individual schools. And I think it's just more an across the board thing where, as we return into school with, you know, larger volumes of students connecting to wifi networks and internet and all of those things. I think all across the board, we've had schools that have had issues with that and with a lot of learning becoming virtual. I think maybe even more so than a reflection than the true nature of connection within our schools is that this is a reflection of the fact that students are more reliant on the internet and wifi for learning. And a lot of students, their entire classes, all activities are online. So when the wifi, or when there is wifi and there are connection issues, it's much more impactful on students' learning, and it's much more of a challenge for teachers to deal with versus prior when those things happened and it was less of an issue. If just, if I didn't answer any of Vice Chair Duarte's questions and he would like to repeat them, then feel free.
What I was trying to get at is we could try to reduce that list to a very short, unless some of the items can just fall off the list if they are taken care of by the local schools. And then we can focus on a smaller list and then try to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Student trustee Bowie, I'd like to go back to achieving and look at the structure of all the subcommittees. As I look at the list, I go to the second, and it has three members on the Catholic faith inaction committee. So insofar as your bylaws, do you have a requirement of what would, let's say, quorum be within a committee, any committee? Because I see some committees having 17, 18, and 13, and then you go down to three.
Yeah, through.
Sorry, please go ahead, trustee Bowie.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the only requirements we have for quorum, as outlined in our policy, is for the general senate as a whole when voting on issues. We don't have any requirements for quorum within our committees as they are student driven. In terms of the Catholic faith inaction committee, that has been an issue for many years now. We, this has actually been the biggest Catholic faith inaction committee we've had in a couple of years. I know last year and the year before, or last year was the first year these committees were implemented. Last year, we had. Last year, we had, uh, one student on the Catholic Faith in Action Committee, so we've definitely been trying to promote that one. And we did get slightly more engagement this year. Um, but we're hoping the students that did volunteer this year, uh, have a great plan in mind for what they're hoping to do. The Catholic Faith in Action Committee is largely revolving around, um, volunteer and creating fundraiser opportunities and that sort of thing. And unfortunately, apparently, a lot of our student senators felt that, um, they, they were more passionate about a different issue and therefore ju- joined a different committee. Uh, we don't force students to join committees. It's, uh, entirely up to them which one they'd like to join because we'd like to reflect the students' concerns as well as possible. Um, but definitely increasing membership and interest in the Catholic Faith in Action Committee is something that we're hoping to do. And we're hoping that maybe throughout the year, we'll have some more students transfer to that committee and we'll do some more work with that committee. But, uh, unfortunately, there is no policy or requirements that we can refer to, to, um, for students to join any specific standing committee.
So, um, Trustee Bowie, um, do you have a mechanism by which you can, um, establish the composition of these committees? In other words, perhaps, um, pass a bylaw or a resolution whereby you state that all committees must have a minimum of so many, um, uh, students on it, or senators, I should say.
Uh, Trustee Bowie, I'm not sure if you can answer that question, though?
Yeah, I can. Um, we do have the power as the Student Senate to create bylaws and policy as it pertains to the way that we function. We also do have the ability to amend our constitution once more, if that's something that we'd like to entrench for the years to come. If it is for just this year, we would be able to pass a policy or a bylaw dictating that. Um, and that's something that we can definitely discuss with the student senators. The only issue with that is that, um, as previously mentioned, the committees have been established with the hope of reflecting the student senators' concerns as best as possible and reflecting what issues they're most passionate about. And, um, in the interest of that, the most that we can do is just encourage senators and give them information about the committees and let them make their choice so that we are reflecting their concerns. But if that is, um, something that interests our senate, that's definitely an avenue that we can take.
Uh, sorry, point of clarification. So could we have the Catholic Faith in Action Committee put a motion or resolution to the body, to the center, the senate, and ask that implement minimum compensation, composition of the committees? Could that be done in this, this physical year?
Yes, that is something that could be done.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, we have Trustee Agnew and Trustee Guzzo on the speakers list. Trustee Guzzo hasn't spoken yet, so uh, Trustee Guzzo, you can go first, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, so just a, just a question, um, yeah, can I, can I just ask the, the Catholic Faith, Faith in Action Committee, what is their mandate?
Uh, Trustee Bowie, you have the floor?
Yeah, so we don't have specific outlines, uh, or parameters for what students need to accomplish in, accomplish within a committee. The mandate of all committees are to discuss student concerns and provide motions and resolutions to the general senate body, uh, as terms of initiatives that they would like to implement within our board. However, in terms of the specific issues that committees need to address, we leave that up to our senators every year. So I know, um, one of the things that students focused on last year within the Student Achievement Leadership Committee was um, arming students with fiscal knowledge about fiscal responsibility, and that was something that they were passionate about as well, uh, last year on our, uh, Environmental Stewardship Committee. We, our students worked specifically on a social media campaign, as well did our wellbeing committee. Um, and what students choose to address is largely up to them. We, as the student trustees, can provide them guidance on what we feel might be most effective or what might or might not work. But, um, we leave that entirely up to the senators to dictate what they would like to address for the year.
Thank you. Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Trustee Bowie. Uh, just another question. Let's say, should, should the senate decide to put, uh, a, a minimum number of, um, committee members and you can't reach that, would the committee still go ahead? Or, or would I assume the committee wouldn't meet then if we required, um, a set number of, uh, members on a committee?
I think we would do our best to ensure that that number was met, or if the quorum wasn't reached, then we'd continue with the committee as it is. That's potentially why, in my opinion, quorum issues might be difficult to enforce, but we definitely could take avenues to do that. It would probably be in the senate's best interest, and I know the other student trustees would agree with me, that we do have all of these committees meeting as they are outlined within our constitution. Uh, we did have issues with engagement in the committees last year. That's something that we're hoping to rectify this year. But, um, it, it is in the senate's best interest that all of these committees, because they've been determined to be prominent concerns for students, that they all meet regularly and are able to fulfill their responsibilities.
Uh, thank you so much, Trustee Bowie. Actually, thank you to all of you, you trustees. I, I feel like, I, we learn so much every time. You get the opportunity to talk and share, and i- it just amazes me how much we have to learn from you all. So thank you, thank you very much, and thank you to the senate for all the hard work you do. Um, i- i- this is amazing. A- and considering that we still have lots of challenges, uh, right now, that this is just so great to see. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you. Trustee Antomasi, you have the floor?
Um, so to all three student trustees, my question would be, um, is there no terms of reference for any of the committees that the Student Senate puts forward? Isn't there like a bare minimum to start with? Or does that change year to year?
Uh, I'm not sure which trustee would like to answer that. Trustee Bowie, uh, you seem to have a lot of knowledge there.
Yeah, yeah, I can, uh, keep talking about this. Gabriella, Alicia, if either of you want to jump in, please feel free. Um, yeah, so unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, as I said, because it is largely student-driven, we do not have terms of reference for the committees other than what is outlined in our constitution, which outlines the basic premise as to what a committee, um, should, you know, be working on, um, and what a committee is comprised of and how, how those are decided. But other than that, again, we largely leave it up to our student senators, who are very capable student leaders, um, many of whom are senior senators who have been on senate for many years, who know the organization well. We, we leave it up to them and we act as advisors. So both Alicia, Gabriella, and I have former experience on senate and former experience on senate standing committees. So we do our best to inform the committees as to what, as I said, what might be most effective, what might work. But we do largely leave it up to them to have their concerns informed because they do represent a large, uh, they do represent a large body of our students and are in our secondary schools. And so we'd like to give them the freedom to address what they believe is most important to them.
Follow-up? Uh, yes, please go ahead.
So, um, I, I would assume that each committee would then prepare some type of a report that comes to the three student trustees. Am I correct there?
Yes, we are. We are, we are, we are in communication with them and they're in communication with the general body of the Student Senate at every general meeting.
Okay. So has there anything come forward? I, I would assume that, you know, if you're part of a, a committee, that there's only three people on it, you would be wanting for more participation. As, have they provided you with any insight that they feel that perhaps they would want more people participating? And ask for the, for advice from yourselves on how to grow that membership?
I can answer that. Um, no, currently, none of them have reached out to us. Uh, we did only make the standing committees at our last meeting, which I believe was only last week. Um, if they did ever bring up a concern like that, of course, we would do our best to address it. We would likely bring it up to the General Assembly. We can talk to the committee and see if this is something that they would maybe want to ask for, maybe pe- uh, maybe we could ask at the next meeting if more people would be interested in joining the committee or switching committees, but that would be completely up to, um, what the, uh, Catholic Faith in Action Committee thinks is best. Um, it is completely up to the student senators on dealing with the issues at hand. And if they believe, no, we want to keep it with the people that see Catholic faith and action as like their biggest concern, then that's by all means their, their choice. Um, the reason we chose to make them like this was so that, uh, student senators could choose the issue that they care about the most, not be forced into a category that they maybe aren't passionate about. If the Student Senate perhaps is interested in making a minimum requirement or having all equal amounts, then we could look at voting on that, but it would definitely have to go through the Student Senate. Um, we can definitely discuss that with them.
Mr. Chair, can I add something to it?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just to clarify something. So these numbers are not like set in stone and student senators are more than welcome to, um, switch committees throughout the year. And, um, Student Faith in Action Committee is more than welcome to also ask for help from other senators at our general meeting. So if they want to plan something and they need more senators, they're more than welcome to do so at our general meeting.
Uh, thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment. Um, I like how you lumped, um, Student Achievement and Leadership. I think they do go hand in hand, and I really like, um, how proactive you are in doing that. Thank you again, student trustees.
Uh, Director Daly, you have the floor?
Uh, thank you. It's through you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, just wanted to, uh, to thank our student trustees for, uh, both the work that they've put into the report and the issues they've raised, and also for the ongoing meetings that, um, that they're having with, uh, with myself and the chair and vice chair. Um, I am looking forward to, uh, attending the next Student Senate meeting. I think it's really important for us to, uh, hear our perspective from the school level, um, e- e- even if it's, it's a challenging sort of perspective that we hear, uh, because that's a way that we can address the needs of our students. I think I might also offer too, that, um, students who are involved in environmental stewardship, students who are involved in improving the wellbeing of all students, students who are involved in ensuring equity and inclusion in our schools, students who are involved in ensuring our special education students have their needs met, are Catholic faith in action. That's what it is.
Uh, thank you, Director Daly. Thank you to our, uh, student trustees. Um, uh, thank you for, uh, your answers. You're great. Uh, moving on to item 10.2, school update. Uh, Director Daly, you have the floor?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to, um, pull up a couple of slides. Okay, so the up, uh, the update for, uh, for this board meeting is a little bit, um, a little bit brief. Uh, a reminder that, um, our goals entering into this school year, and really our goals for this school year, were to come back and establish and maintain safe and healthy learning environments for students, staff, and visitors, uh, to support student mental health and wellbeing, to, uh, increase our online capacity, both in the virtual school and a face-to-face environment, to try and meet the needs of all of our learners and to re-engage our Catholic community. So certainly, some of the feedback from our student trustees, uh, indicate that we still have some work to do in a number of those areas. But that's the work that we're going to do, uh, throughout the course of this school year. Um, as, uh, as we noted at the beginning of the, the meeting, uh, this week is Treaty Recognition Week in a month of, uh, November indigenous, uh, edu- uh, in, uh, recognizing indigenous education as well. So I want to thank, uh, both the staff at the school level and Sherry Sable in particular for the resources that she has been able to provide to our staff and students as we both learn and recognize Treaty Recognition Week. Um, in terms of some clubs and extracurricular activities, I think all, uh, trustees probably either saw it perhaps face-to-face or, uh, certainly via social media, uh, that lots of, uh, a- a- at the elementary level specifically and also at the secondary level, lots of fun stuff going on around Halloween, uh, last Friday in our schools. Uh, kids participating, staff participating. Um, I think it's worth noting, and I really do want to thank all of our staff, both at the elementary and secondary, uh, level for trying to, um, for, for trying to, to implement these goals over the course of the year. It's been, uh, a challenging startup for sure, um, uh, for, for everybody, for students, for families, for staff. Uh, but I do know that our staff is working really hard to try and provide those opportunities for students. Um, it, it's a, it's a, a number of protocols that still are, uh, remain at elementary that, um, although we're used to them, it doesn't make them any easier. At secondary, it's a really a different format this year. Uh, the quadmaster, as we've heard, is challenging for students. It's challenging for staff as well. But I do want to recognize how hard our staff are working to provide those sorts of, uh, things for our students. And I do, uh, want to speak on behalf of our senior staff in appreciation of that work. Uh, and also to parents for being patient with us as we work our way through the year. In terms of secondary extracurricular activities, our fall season is starting to wrap up. Uh, we're entering into the playoffs. Uh, this week and next week, we've had a couple of championships, uh, decided in field hockey, uh, in golf as well. Uh, cross-country, uh, meets were held this week and, uh, students will be off to GAC and also meets, uh, for those that have, that have qualified. Um, as the winter season comes up, and, and again, a little bit more specific to secondary athletics, um, uh, winter sports like hockey and, uh, swimming's in the winter season, they do require us to use municipal, municipal facilities because we don't have ice rinks and pools at our schools. Uh, and the municipalities do have different, some different expectations with regards to accessing those facilities. So as of the end of this month, our students, our staff, our volunteers, our coaches, our spectators will be required in municipal facilities to provide proof of vaccination. Uh, so that's not the case right now in, uh, for students participating in our own facilities. I, many people, uh, or many of our students, both boys and girls, participating in hockey would be used to that from, from, uh, community programs, but I think that's important to note. And that's been, uh, communicated to our student athletes at the secondary level. With regards to our elementary extracurriculars, schools have been implementing, uh, intramural sports over the, the course of the last couple of weeks. Uh, we are planning for a reintroduction of elementary interschool sports uh, by late November, hopefully the last week in November with volleyball starting off first. Um, kind of a, a new or late-breaking news with regards to spectators at our secondary athletic events. Um, trustees would be aware that for our outdoor events, both field hockey and football, spectators have, uh, been allowed and, and had some great numbers at, um, at a number of, uh, of our games. Uh, I was at school last week where, I mean, I think there was probably 500, uh, people at the game. Uh, we are now allowing spectators at events indoors, and this is following the direction of our local public health unit, uh, where people will be asked, as they always are, uh, before they enter the building, to complete their daily screening, to maintain physical distancing, to maintain masking indoors, not to attend if they're feeling symptomatic, and that's, that's our, our protocol at any time, uh, when people are coming to the building. And also that spectators would need to show proof of vaccination. So we have given those parameters to our secondary schools, and they're putting plans in place to accommodate spectators for indoor events. A bit of an up, uh, update with regards to, uh, student transportation. While there are still some delays, uh, on a number of our routes, um, those delays are starting to diminish. And if, if, um, you know, you're on one of those routes where there still are some delays, you probably haven't seen that yet. But the on-time performance for our bus routes has improved since the beginning of the school year. Most of, but not all, but most of the delays that are continuing to occur are in the 10 to 20-minute range. The bus companies continue to recruit new drivers and have drivers in training right now. And there should be some communication coming out towards the end of this week with regards, uh, to resuming courtesy seating. Uh, we, we haven't offered courtesy seating on our buses, uh, in the last two years, I think. Um, and we took a slow approach to that this year, but information will be coming out to schools, uh, and to parents, I think, at the end of this week regarding the process for applying for the resumption of courtesy seating. Um, we're all well aware of the protective measures that uh, are in place at our schools, whether it's the daily screening, masking, um, students and, and staff uh, being vaccinated, physical distancing, hand washing, all of those elements, improved ventilation. Uh, those are all still in place. We do know that uh, last week, the ministry released uh, an expanded testing strategy for interior schools. I believe the memo came up on, on Thursday. Um, we're still awaiting uh, a little bit of additional information, both from the ministry and from our local public health. Um, but the new approaches under this testing strategy um, are an expansion of, of PCR self-collection kits. So they would be available to publicly funded schools in the, in, in the province. Students would be able to do the PCR test and then drop it off at a location in the community. Uh, the details of that have not been fleshed out quite yet. And then secondly, a, a test to stay approach, and this really revolves around, we haven't had schools in this situation, uh, but in some jurisdictions, entire schools have had to close uh, because of COVID cases. This would help mitigate that where students would be able to do the rapid test every other day. And if a certain percentage of students in the building were able to complete it, then the school could stay open. Um, but as I've said, we haven't been in that, that situation here in Halton. So the ministry will continue uh, to share further information uh, on us, uh, with us on that. And Halton Public Health is also reviewing the details of those two new initiatives. Uh, and will make recommendations on how those testing options will fit within our parameters here at Halton. Um, one of the things around the flexibility of the initiative uh, is that different public health units, depending on the COVID situation in their area, um, may, may approach this in slightly different manners. And, and this is just more uh, of an information piece that was shared with us uh, last week. So as of last week, um, in our twelve to seventeen-year-old range here in Halton, uh, ninety percent of students uh, or ninety percent of the population in that age range, age range have received uh, two doses of the COVID vaccine. Uh, so that's a really high number and, and very encouraging uh, for our secondary students. Um, the self-assessment uh, that we ask students and staff and everybody to do continues. Uh, before they come to school, uh, we ask parents and we, they've been great about it, ask parents to, to, to remind and, and keep their students uh, in, in that habit. Uh, if students don't feel well, if staff don't feel well, they should be staying home. Um, we take our direction with regards to uh, case management from Halton Public Health uh, and will continue to do that. Currently, uh, we have eight active confirmed cases of COVID and five closed classes in the system. Uh, that comes, we've had five outbreaks declared in our schools. A reminder, an outbreak is constituted by uh, two positive cases in a school that have a, have a, have a connection. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we're at internally. Uh, as always, uh, information, additional information and updates are found on our website. Uh, we communicate with parents i- if, if needed via email uh, as well as on our Instagram, Twitter and Facebook pages. And that's my update for this week.
Uh, thank you Director Daly. Up on the speakers list, we have trustee Agnew.
Um, great, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so uh, we've heard a couple of things tonight which are extremely encouraging. So, and you know, ninety percent of our twelve to seventeen-year-olds are vaccinated. Um, we are resuming additional sports and adding um, sports at uh, elementary level and um, I know that everybody's really excited about that and that's all fantastic. We also heard tonight from our student, uh, our student trustees that one of the concerns that's coming from their student senate is with respect to students not having enough time at lunch to go out and come back. So I'm, I'm asking at this point for an update on how our advocacy efforts are going with respect to public health and getting our cafeterias a little more open, allowing students to sit together. If students can play volleyball together indoors unmasked with each other and then against another school indoor unmasked, um, why are we not allowing students to sit together in a cafeteria, more than four to a table, without distancing, without masks, so that they can actually not be panicked um, to try to find alternative seating arrangements or to try to get out and come back? Um, we know that this is, is affecting mental health for our students, so I, I'm struggling with why we're opening up everything else, but we are not in the uh, position to open up our cafeterias. And I want to know what advocacy efforts are happening and when we can expect to see that uh, those um, restrictions be eased.
You trustee, I don't, I think we actually have with um, um, eased them somewhat, but I'm going to turn that over to Superintendent uh, Bukai.
Thank you and through you, um, Chair, Director Daly, thanks for the question, um, trustee Agnew. So yes, we have been um, advocating each week uh, with uh, public health. The update is actually that um, like you noted, there are students that are sitting four to a table. In some cases, depending on the length of the table, there are six students to a table. Um, they are distancing as much as possible and um, from accounts from the schools, they are circulating a little bit more. They are still distancing. They are wearing their masks, so they are following those protocols, but certainly there's more uh, opportunity for them to sit in groups um, in the cafeteria.
Well, up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so that's exactly my point. So they have to distance, right? They have to distance four to a table, maybe six, a little bit more circulation going on, but we can allow students to play volleyball, basketball, you name it, they can play it inside, they can play it against each other, they can play it against other teams unmasked. Um, and, but we can have students sitting together more than four, six to a table socially distanced in our own cafeterias. And so it's getting cold, it felt like one degrees outside today. What are we doing to get our students in our cafeterias, sitting together, interacting with one another, being social? Why is an exception being made for our kids who play sports? But exceptions are not being made for our students who don't play sports, who are sitting in cafeterias trying to spend time with one another. It is a huge complaint. I continue to hear from parents um, and students and I don't understand why this isn't moving forward. It's, it's November and again, we're opening up all of these things for sports, but we can't have eight kids sit together at a table or six even sit close together? It makes zero sense and I don't know what we need to do to move that forward.
Uh, one of the things I can offer trustee Agnew in terms of uh, explaining the rationale is for sports. And this is um, sort of the latest conversation I've had with uh, public health, is that sports are allowed. Um, but when there is a case, for example, contact tracing is easily possible because there's a list of team members and contacts that can be identified based on the risk assessment and the type of duration of activity. So in as much as um, I, I, I truly understand this, this concern about the um, lunchrooms and the cafeterias and whatnot, we are following the direction from public health and so it is an ongoing conversation that we do have. Um, the fact that we have opened up further uh, in most cases in, in, in the cafeterias, they are, they have increased in number and initially they were only two to a table, so we've moved from four to six. Um, and I know that the schools are doing the most that they can even to open up additional spaces in classrooms. So it's certainly a conversation that we do have ongoing weekly um, with public health and they're fully aware um, that, of our concern. Again, you know, we are following their direction and um, in all cases, it, it really is working in terms of preventative measures. So, you know, we err on the side always of caution and safety. So again, it's, it's like we've discussed in the past, it is, it is something that continues to come up at our table. Potentially, um, when the semesters, if we do go to a semestered um, program again, the uh, lunches may look different and it's something that we'll be bringing forward at, at, for public health to consider.
Well, we need to do better, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair George, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, question here. Uh, we, we are now allowing from November twenty-sixth, the, the kids who are going to be participating in sports, they need to be vaccinated and to provide a proof. Are we going to use the same adestation process uh, for collecting the proof or uh, will they need to upload their proof? What's the plan? Second, Daly?
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so students, as they enter the facility, would have to show their vaccination status to whoever mans the municipal facility. Um, certainly the messaging we want to be able to give to students is to let them know upfront that this is a requirement because we don't want anybody to fall into a situation, for example, where they make a team under the illusion that they don't need to be vaccinated and then they find out on game day that they, that they can't part. Um, for, for our indoor, uh, for indoor spectators to our facilities, uh, we would be asking for people to show their vaccination status as they, as they enter into the building.
Vice Chair George, do you have a follow?
I actually have another question. Uh, so we are allowing indoor spectators for secondary and uh, secondary, uh, what about elementary? Uh, are we following the same protocol or?
Uh, we haven't established that protocol yet for elementary and only because um, we, we haven't implemented it, really tested it out yet for secondary and it's a little bit different at elementary just based on the physical size of gyms. Um, they don't have bleachers typically. Uh, there is space in secondary gyms where people can maintain that distancing. So we still need to think through how that can best work at, at elementary. We're not quite there yet.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Antumasi, you have the floor.
Um, thank you. I guess um, to whomever can answer the question, um, two small questions. Are we collecting data insofar as what percentage of our students are vaccinated? Um, as well as our teachers or staff um, within all our schools?
Uh, Director Daly, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we do have data on staff. We do not collect uh, student vaccination information.
Trustee Antumasi, do you have a follow?
Um, insofar as the um, changes indoors um, on how close or what the proximity is for students to sit near one another, is that factored by um, or is that subject to ventilation? And or um, the amount of air changes that occur in a specific area? Which has now allowed an increase um, in cafeterias or is that separate?
Uh, super, would it be superintendent? We'll start, start there and.
Uh, you Mr. Chair, it, it is not based on the number of air changes of the ventilation system um, for that particular area in question.
So um, clarification, so we know that the particles indoors are um, or in areas that are, that allow large number of people, the particles are smaller and warmer areas. Um, which would then cause um, the possibility of increased interaction or not interaction, but contact of COVID nineteen. Is that factor in in, in, in um, Halton um, decision to, to allow more people in these areas?
Uh, I'm not sure who'd be the answer. It's really a public health question. I don't know if Superintendent Bukai has any insight into that or Director Daly.
Um, just with, maybe I'll jump in, just with regards to spectators, uh, trustee Antumasi, we'll be limiting the amount of spectators that, that, uh, that'll be allowed into the secondary uh, into the secondary gyms and based on the cafeteria seating we have right now. Um, I, I guess you could argue that the numbers of people in the cafeteria are limited as well. Um, it's really, I think from a public health perspective and maybe, uh, maybe, I mean, could, could you correct me on this, it's really the ability to maintain the physical distancing. So obviously, for the thousand people in the cafeteria, that's difficult to do.
So I, I, I guess, isn't the advice coming from public health that um, to avoid being face-to-face, which is really why the limits in cafeterias um, is the way it is now? Um, because of the fact that the particles indoors are more, are, are smallers, which then penetrate the masks, which then cause, you know, um, um, you know, explosion of, of, of contact. I- i- isn't that the reason?
I, I, I couldn't really speak to that part of it. I, I would offer that in the cafeteria, those limited numbers and, and focus on distancing would, would probably be reflective of the fact that um, at some point, kids are going to take their masks off to eat, so they want to maintain that distancing. But maybe, maybe Agnew could speak a little bit more to that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I guess that, thank you.
Yes, thank you and, and through you, Mr. Chair. Um, trustee Antumasi, you're making a good point and exactly that. It's, all of these measures work together. Uh, the number one measure is the physical distancing. And so once you establish physical distancing as best as that you can, you're still using those other preventative measures of masking, um, ensuring that, you know, students are not coming to school unwell. And in this particular age group, it's, it's the, it's the vaccination. So the reason why we're having successes, as, as Director Daly noted, about the numbers of um, cases is because all of these measures are working in tandem and, and also there's the hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette. So, you know, in, in our conversations with public health, really the number one measure that they start with is the physical distancing and so that's why they have the description of uh, as much distancing as possible and uh, distancing between cohorts. Um, you know, we, because of the, the age group and the high success rate um, with the vaccination status, it, it is um, it is having a positive effect and it's something that uh, public health does review uh, on a regular basis.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
You through, miss, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, Director Daly. Director Daly, um, thanks for an excellent report again. Uh, quick question about um, masking outdoors. Um, is it up to the principal? Like is there some schools that are masking outdoors and some that are not?
Director Daly, thank you. Um, trustee O'Brien, are you referring to like uh, elementary kids at recess? Is that what you mean? Um, well, they, they, really the direction is students uh, aren't required to wear masks if they can maintain physical distancing. I might want to ask either Superintendent Bukai or Family School Superintendent to, to maybe speak to more specifically why an individual school might have a different approach.
Sure.
Superintendent Bukai?
Sure, I can start out. I'm through you, Mr. Chair. Um, trustee O'Brien, really the most, all schools have been directed to not have masking outside during recess. That's the direction from um, the ministry and public health unless there is an occasion where they can't maintain uh, distancing. However, I would say that in most cases, um, the students are outside at recess playing, running around without masks and that's the reasons why that we've maintained uh, cohorting at recess.
So just for clarification, there is no school that is mandating masking outside?
No.
Thank you.
Uh, trustee Caravelli, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to ask a question about, and we received a letter from Mr. Smithco. It's in our correspondence package about the uh, cohorts um, being outside and uh, do we see that ending? And um, what would be the criteria for that to end? So that the children aren't put in cohorts when they're outside during recess. Thank you.
Uh, Superintendent Bukai, have you spoken with public health on that matter?
Yes, and thank you um, through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I have, as recently as yesterday, just to reiterate and sort of um, you know, bring the concerns uh, forward. The, and the uh, main points to explain the whole rationale around cohorting is that just because being, just because uh, students are outdoors does not mean the risk of, of transmission is reduced. Close prolonged outdoor uh, contact can result in COVID nineteen transmission. So if cohorting is not maintained outdoors during recess and there's a case um, in a student, it will not be possible to do the cohort tracing. More, more cohorts will have to be dismissed if public health is unable to clearly identify close contacts. And this is especially true in the unvaccinated um, uh, students, which is uh, for the most part, all of our sec- uh, elementary students except for grade seven and eight. So um, it's, it's one of those things that um, you know, is, is, is an ongoing concern and that is the reason um, why we maintain the um, cohorts at recess in elementary.
Trustee, you have a follow?
Yes, I'm, I'm just not sure if, if you missed it, if I missed it. Uh, did you say that uh, you are having conversations around it and perhaps?
Did you say that you are having conversations around it and perhaps it might cease in the near future?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Caravella, it's potentially going to ameliorate, probably, you know, once public health determines that it's safe for students in elementary to mix cohorts, it might depend on the number of, the rate of vaccination, similar to what we see in the age 12 to 17. So I don't know exactly when, and I'm sure they can't say exactly when. I mean, the hope is, is that we move away from cohorting at recess in elementary, but those are the reasons why we still do it.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to go back to some of the questions and similar to what trustee Agnew was asking. My understanding is, is that the Halton District School Board, their lunchtime routine, same public health, that there is no restrictions on them sitting in the cafeteria and the high school students, and that it's just there to keep track of who they're sitting with for contact tracing. Very similarly, if they were to go outside, let's say to Tim Hortons, or Starbucks, or McDonald's, and they were eating with a group of people, and it came back that, let's say, one of them tested positive, public health would then ask them who they had been in contact and who they had been with. So I'm trying to understand why it's different for our board than it is for the public board. Are we getting two different sets of directions from Dr. McGanney or from public health? I just, I need to understand why it would be different for our co-terminus board than it is for us.
Director Daly?
No, the protocols or the advice given by public health is the same for both boards, and we do meet with public health together, both of our boards, when we meet with them weekly. I think both boards have implemented that advice in a way that they understand it and think that it makes sense based on the advice given. In some cases, we don't do things exactly the same. In other cases, we're pretty lined up.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow?
I do. Thank you, Director Daly. So just to clarify, what specifically has public health said in regards to eating together in the cafeteria at the tables? Have they said no more than four to six students at a table?
Superintendent Bukic, can you answer that?
I just, because you're saying that it's interpretive, which I get, you know, you're implementing it based on how you've interpreted it. So I need to understand what exactly public health is saying in regards to that specific, besides going to public health directly ourselves and asking for clarification.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. So, public health actually states that students within the same cohort should maintain as much distancing as possible. And students not in the same cohort should have at least two meters distancing from them. So we know that in the cafeteria, students are not going to be sitting necessarily within their cohort, and that's the point, I think, that trustee Agnew was making earlier about friends sitting with friends whether they're in the cohort or not. So we are actually doing very similar practice as Halton District at this time. We're also, I also keep in close contact with my colleague at the co-terminus board. And so our students are doing the same as they are in terms of sitting at tables. Primarily, it's four to six at a table, and they are sitting with friends and they are also, you know, remembering who they're sitting with in the event that there's a case. So there is more room for them to sit with friends and to socialize.
Follow-up, just a clarification, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Sorry, so you said about the same cohorts, but we know in high school, they're in more than one cohort. And we know that, so there's already intermingling between that. So that doesn't really make sense. And we know that the grade nines have lunch together, and the grade tens have lunch together, grade elevens, twelves, et cetera. So how are we, it just, it doesn't make sense. Are we, do we have a limit in our classes now? Like, are classes limited to 15 like they were last year to allow for the two-meter distance? Because they're not one cohort, they're actually intermingling between different groups because of the quad master, first course in the morning, second course in the afternoon. Because what you're saying is, is two meters distance if they can't stay in the same cohort? We already know they're not in the same cohort because in high school, they can't be, because they're in two different classes.
Yeah, that's correct, trustee Guzzo. That's what I'm saying, when you asked about what public health's direction is, their general direction is that students that are in the same cohort maintain as much distancing as possible, but when they're not in the same cohort, to maintain two meters distancing. So at this time in the cafeteria, when the students are sitting together, it's similar to what you referenced in terms of what the other board is doing. Students are not sitting together from the same cohort, they are intermingling between cohorts. What they're doing is they still are trying to maintain as much distancing as possible while still sitting at the table.
I understood that, Superintendent Bukic. I understood that. I did understand that. You're repeating what you've already said. My question is, though, in high school, are you suggesting that the high school students are in one cohort when they're rotating between two classes? That's not two cohorts. That's not one cohort, sorry. There's no, there's no possible way to be in one cohort in high school. It's not like elementary where they maintain and they're in their one classroom, they're not, because they're already moving around and they're intermingling from course to course. So if we were to apply that theory that you're saying for lunch, then technically, they should, all the students should stay in the same cohort all day. They shouldn't be switching classes.
Correct. So just to clarify, they're not sitting in their cohorts at lunches? Is that what you're, I think, is that what you're underst-
No. My understanding is, is if we apply the theory that you're staying, or if we apply what you've said in regards to staying in the same cohort, then our high school students wouldn't move from one course to the next. They go, they rotate in two courses throughout a day, and they're not all in the same two courses. So I'll give an example, we have one student who has, let's say, math in the morning, science in the afternoon. They're not with the exact same students in the morning with math as they are in science. And the classes aren't limited at 15 students anymore, they're back to normal sizes. So technically, are we saying that one cohort is potentially 60 kids? Even though they're mixed, and it's actually not one cohort, because the 30 kids in the morning class aren't the same 30 kids in the afternoon class and vice versa, which means there's like 150 kids that could potentially be cross-tracking. So you can't say that there's one cohort in high school. So I don't understand how that theory applies to the lunch, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying trustee Guzzo that there's one cohort. There can be, they can be in multiple cohorts. The members of the cohorts are known. And at lunchtime, we, they, the difference is at lunchtime is that they can sit with anyone. They're just remembering who they sat with in the event that there is a case.
Okay, we'll move on to next. So trustee DeRosa hasn't spoken yet, he's on our speakers list, so you have the floor next, followed by trustee Agnew, then trustee Antumasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't get into details of cohorts. I have a very simple question. And maybe Director Daly might be able to answer this, or maybe shed some light. Director Daly, do we have, do we have the ability to compare our COVID experience, which is ultimately the result of our activities and the manner in which we approach the problem of keeping our kids safe from COVID? So do we have any comparative data with respect to our co-terminus board? Because it seems to be the basis for comparison for best practices. Ultimately, the proof is in the pudding. Are numbers higher or are they lower? I'd really like to get some insight on that. Thank you.
Director Daly, I'm not sure if you've done any comparison.
Thank you, and through Mr. Chair. No, to be honest, I haven't. In terms of confirmed cases in our schools right now, and how many classes or cohorts we've had to close since September, that's on the slide on board here. I think the combination of all of those protective factors have enabled us to limit the spread of COVID in our schools, and it's allowed public health to do quick contact tracing. And I haven't compared ourselves with the public board or other boards for that matter. I would, I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. So maybe a closing comment. I haven't seen the numbers on COVID for a while in total, but I suspect that, and this may be a stretch here, but I'm going to assume that the numbers are low, they're kept low, and they're kept under control as a result of the activities that we're carrying up, that are being carried out right now, under the recommendations of public health. And within those recommendations, whatever flexibility we have, and I got to think that we have some discretion in how we implement the high-level recommendations, I'm thinking that they're working for us. So to take an early leap of faith, I think, I think we're best advised to go slowly as we go. I think we're progressing every, you know, every week, every month by loosening up things a little bit and keeping the numbers low. Again, although I haven't seen the latest numbers, and I may be assuming wrong, but I think our strategy is producing results. So, you know, the comparison to our co-terminus board may be, maybe a valid point to make, but we need to take into account our own particular circumstances. And if we have something that seems to be working, my recommendation is that we stick with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, we have trustee Agnew.
Thank you very much. And through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to put a motion on the table.
Okay, can you state your motion?
Yep, I will actually put it in the chat, but I can read it out for you, and then I'll put it in the chat to make it easier. So whereas our vaccination rates in Halton are 90% for our youth aged 12 to 17, whereas student mental health is paramount, whereas secondary students are disadvantaged by the current guidelines that limit their ability to engage with their peers, and whereas there is no single cohort with the current setup, be it resolved that the HCSB send a letter to Dr. McGanney, appealing for the consideration of Halton Public Health to relax some of the protocols in our secondary schools, specifically with respect to cafeteria guidelines to allow more flexibility for students. Let me send that in there.
Okay, so in the meantime, I'll ask for a seconder, and then we can, we can review once it's in the chat to make sure that's exactly what is proposed. Do we have a seconder for this motion?
I'll second it, trustee Guzzo.
trustee Guzzo, okay, we'll see if we can get that in the chat.
Sorry, just one more second, I'm just getting it in there.
Okay, so that is complete, as typed in the chat.
Yes, sorry, other than the spelling.
Okay.
I'm trying to type fast.
No problem. So you have five minutes to open debate?
Great, and thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I really don't need that much time. I've been quite vocal about the concerns around the limits that we have in our cafeterias. As we know, and as has been stated a few points tonight, we do have an excellent vaccination rate for our students in our secondary panel. We know that students are leaving the schools and they are gathering together at other establishments to eat together in close proximity. We know that we have students that are resuming sports activities indoors and against other teams from other schools without masks. We also, we also know that there are mental health issues with our students and the need for them to be able to engage in a more meaningful way. So for all of these reasons, I think it's imperative that we advocate for our students who are disadvantaged in our cafeteria settings, who cannot sit together, who cannot be in close proximity. They are not doing it. They are not in our cafeterias. They are going outside, the weather is getting cold out, we have students that are sitting alone because they don't have the money or the funds or the ability to go out for lunch, their peers are leaving, they're sitting by themselves. I don't know why we can't think about using QR codes or using other ways. We've been very creative about how to allow 500 people to come and watch an outdoor football game, or how to allow spectators to come to an indoor event, but we can't be creative in how we can put regular numbers of kids at a cafeteria table together. I think we need to advocate for our students, make this easier for the staff that's trying to keep all of this together in our schools. Make this easier for the staff that's trying to keep all of this together in our schools. And ask Dr. McGanney to really look at the factual things that exist out there as they pertain to students of this age group and exercise some ability to relax these protocols and let these kids be kids. So that's all I have. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Trustee Tomasi, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. As I read this particular motion, it somewhat behooves me in the sense that you're talking about mental health and you're eliminating or not including the physical component, which to me, mental health and physical health work hand in hand. So you're asking for us to write a letter to Dr. McGanney to ask to consider excluding or dealing with Halton Catholic District School Board differently than they do with our co-terminus board? Is that what, what I'm reading in this particular motion?
May I answer that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, so I don't have the ability to speak on behalf of our co-terminus board. I'm not a trustee with that board. All I can do is speak on behalf of ours. My understanding, as well as what has been said by Director Daley, as well as by Superintendent Bukhich, is that guidelines do come down from Public Health and then those are there, those are then further interpreted, if you will, between the two different boards as to how they'd like to be implemented. Perhaps there's some confusion, perhaps there's some misunderstanding about the guidelines that are coming down from Public Health as they pertain to cafeterias. So again, you know, at this particular point, I'm not too concerned with what's happening at our co-terminus board. I do know that they do have more flexibility there, but that's up for them to, to determine what they'd like to do. I'm speaking about the staff, the students, the parents who are coming to me with these concerns around cafeterias, around the inability for students to sit together. We know that these arguments are not holding water. They're not cohorting a single cohort. They're mixing all day long. They're mixing at the lockers. They're mixing when they walk up for lunch. They're mixing when they play on the sports teams. All of those things are happening. And while I 100% appreciate our need to be vigilant with our protocols, I still think there's a way that we can allow these students to be together in our cafeteria with protocols in place like QR codes, ability to track. Why is it any different for kids to play sports together? I'm telling parents, you know what I'm telling them? I'm telling them to tell their kids to go sign up for the volleyball team so that they can go and be together with their, with fellow people because they can't do it in the cafeteria. So why is it okay for the basketball team to do it and it's not okay for the students who don't play sports to have that ability to be with each other when there are things we can put in place if contact tracing and, and those other things are an issue? We screen our students every single day. They're, they're almost all vaccinated. I, I struggle with this.
Trustee Tomasi, do you have a follow up?
Yeah, yeah, I have a follow up. All right. So assuming that Halton Catholic is following and interpreting the protocols as handed down by our Halton Health, are you now saying that we want to petition Halton Health to treat us differently? Because I don't see that we're not interpreting the protocols differently.
Okay, so I think that you keep putting words in my mouth. I'm answering you. The, the motion is the motion. The motion is very clear cut. I'm not going to speak to what you may interpret to be my motivation or what it is I'm trying to say. I'm saying what I'm saying in the motion. So again, you know, you saying, is this what you're saying? What I'm saying is what's in the motion. I would hope that my fellow trustees can support it in the interest of allowing these students to have a a more enjoyable experience. Again, we heard from our student trustees this evening of the challenges, mental health. They don't have enough time to go out for lunch and get back, all of these different things. Why can't we advocate to mental health to say, look at what's going on out there? Why are the rules different for McDonald's and Popeyes and Subway and, you know, Jack Astor's than they are in our cafeterias? And perhaps there's some things that they can be doing to make this a safer opportunity for our students while still allowing them to, to have this opportunity to engage with each other. And that's what I'm saying. And that's what it says in the motion.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, trustee Agnew, for putting this forward. I will be supporting it. I think that the request is for a review. And why not? And if it helps the mental health and, you know, for all the other reasons that were mentioned. I actually wanted to add an amendment. An amendment to this reflecting the letter also in our board package, speaking to the mental health of children in the elementary panel. So be it further resolved that Halton Public Health also review their requirement to remain in cohort for elementary, for the elementary panel to remain in cohorts outside during recess.
Okay, we'll just wait till that's typed up and we can confirm that's what your intention is. While we're doing that, can I get a seconder for the amendment?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee DeRosa. Trustee Carabella, could you repeat?
Okay, let's see. Be it further resolved that Halton Public Health also review their requirement. I think I said their requirement for the elementary panel to remain in cohorts outside during recess. I don't know if relax is better than review. Also, yeah, maybe relax their requirement.
Okay, so we have an amendment. We're going to discuss the amendment which is highlighted in blue in front of you. Trustee Carabella, you have five minutes to open.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, let me put my camera on. I really would just say to reflect this motion, this amendment to the motion would reflect the letter, the correspondence we received, also talking about the mental health of children at the elementary panel. And really being outside in fresh air and, you know, running or, you know, playing about. I think keeping them in cohorts is, is very difficult and perhaps keeps them away from their other friends in different classes and mixing. So if we're already requesting a review and a relaxing, I would just bring this to the attention of the Public Health, Halton Public Health as well. Thank you.
Yes. Is there anybody who would like to speak to this? Otherwise, we can go to a vote. Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I like the amendment and I like the original motion. Trustee Carabella, I wonder if we're review, what might have been better, only because I don't see the word relax in the previous motion.
Oh.
Just my opinion, unless, did I miss something there?
I don't know. I thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
You might want to keep the same language, consideration to relax, because.
I appreciate that, yes.
Just my opinion.
So.
Yeah.
Just so that it matches the first one.
Thank you very much.
No worries.
Yeah, I mean, I hear any objection to that change in wording, so that's, that's fine. Trustee Tomasi, you have the floor?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So to both trustee Zagnew and trustee Carabella, this particular initiative, are, are we not making an assumption that Halton Health can make that unilateral decision without it being brought down or sent down by the Ministry of Health through the Ministry of Education? Just raising the question.
We're, we're dealing with the amendment, so trustee Carabella, if you're able, you can answer that question.
Okay, well, I think that what we hear is the government also saying they're following the directions of Public Health officials. So let's go there. Let's go there first.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow up?
Yeah, so my question is very specific. Are we saying that the local health has the capacity or the ability to change the legislation that's handed down by the province? Because by us sending this particular letter, we're asking Halton Public Health to make another decision. And I'm just wondering whether or not we can do that. That is the question that I have on the table, which either one of you or even staff can answer for that matter.
But because it's pertinent to the most. We were asking a question of public health and, and it's up to them to respond accordingly. If they can't and do not have the authority, then that would be their response, I would assume.
But we're giving them direction, Mr. Chair. That motion gives direction to public health to do something that they may not have the legal capacity to do. That is really what I'm talking about.
Right. I understand. We're asking them to, to consider changing their direction. And they would then reply with whether they have the ability or desire to do that. So I think asking the question is appropriate. Does that follow up, trustee Tomasi?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Trustee Agnew?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I would ask trustee Carabella for consideration as part of this amendment would be that the vaccination rates that I stated earlier for ages 12 to 17, and we do know that you know, a good majority of our elementary students do not fall within that category and they're still at this point unvaccinated. So I wondered if there was consideration, perhaps trustee Carabella, to look currently at reviewing relaxing requirements for grades six to eight on the cohorting piece because they do fall under the above rationale about the vaccine rates. Where we do know that the, you know, K to five are not vaccinated currently. So I just, I'm wondering if that would be maybe the next step, once we start to see those vaccines come into play. But would you consider making it for the time being for grade six to eight because we do know that they are in that highly vaccinated population?
So we would have to do it under consensus since it's, it's now in possession of the board. If anybody is opposed to, to that change.
I might be opposed. I'm just thinking because then the younger grades, I mean, then, you know, then the younger grades see the older grades mixing. And maybe the Public Health unit might make that suggestion, but I'd like to leave it, I'd like to leave it open for all elementary classes. And if there's are some restrictions, then Public Health can come forward with those. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Could I just ask a point of clarification, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. The only thing that I would say with respect to that trustee Carabella is that it doesn't fit with the rationale above. Because the wherashes are specific to the secondary panel. So that's the only thing. And I, I think we need to leave those in there because they do directly relate to why we're asking for the review of the cafeteria guidelines. That's the only piece I'm thinking about with your amendment. And I just wanted to clarify that with you, Mr. Chair, your thoughts on, on that? Because the two don't add up.
So yeah, a friendly amendment, there would be no opposition. If there is opposition, then I can get parliamentary rapport to confirm that you would have to do an amendment to the amendment. Parliamentary rapport, is that accurate?
Yes, sure, that is correct. If trustee Carabella or anyone else objects to adding the words in red, inserting the words in red, then trustee Agnew would need to proceed with a secondary amendment if she wishes. I don't know if you wanted me to speak on the question about link between wherashes and resolves.
Yes, if you could.
That's an, that's not, that's an argument as to whether or not to accept the amendment, whether the linkage is there. I, I wouldn't see that as a reason to rule out an amendment, that the link is perceived or not perceived to be there between the logic of the wherashes and the results.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is there opposition to adding grade six to eight?
Yes, that's me.
So then trustee Agnew, would you like to amend the amendment?
I would, Mr. Chair, yes.
Okay. Do we have a seconder? Vice Chair Duer seconded. So trustee Agnew, you have the, the floor?
I, I don't think anybody needs to hear from me. Again, I, I stated sort of my thinking behind it when I made that change, just simply because we do know that we do have vaccination rates. And while I recognize it may seem unfair for the K to five, I think it's a great start if we could look at easing the requirements for cohorting for the six to eight, because we do know that they are heavily vaccinated. And so I, I do think that that just might make some sense and then to go from there. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor? On this matter, trustee DeRosa or the previous one you want to speak?
Help me find my, my place now. I think there's been a couple of things. If I can just make a general comment that applies to to everything that we're doing here, then I, I will I will give up my space. I, I am deeply concerned of where we're going down here. I do support the idea of requesting from Public Health some flexibility where flexibility exists. But now the conversation is starting to get more specific to younger ages and so on and so forth. So the problem I have is that I don't know what our COVID experiences and, and how it compares. Are we really doing this for a reason or not a reason, or is it just a notional thing? I'm, I'm really struggling with this. And if I don't support it, it's not because I don't support writing a letter. It's because I really don't know where we're going with this. And we're, we seem to be trekking in an area where we have absolutely no competence and no jurisdiction to make a judgment. So this is what I will say, Mr. Chair. Thank you for letting me speak to the, to the motion in question. Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I think we have to remember, this is only a request for information. That's all it is, or a request for a review. We're not playing doctor here, or we're not giving medical direction. We're just asking Public Health. If they think there's something that they can do, they, they can do it. If, if they think we've gone beyond our limits, maybe they could tell us what our limits are. I think it's like going to your doctor and asking them after a heart attack, what can I do? Like, they will tell us what they can do, what they can't. There, there's no direction here. I, I don't think they are not under any obligation to even pay attention to the letter, really. They'll acknowledge it, but that's it. So I think it's, it's I think we get too caught up in, in vaccination rates and all this. That's their job. Let them do it. They can tell us instead of us trying to play doctor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Vice Chair Duer, you have the floor?
Mr. Chair, first to Secretary Daley here. The outbreaks that we have had and the COVID cases that we had in school that you presented, do they fall in the grade six to eight? Because we know that this students have been vaccinated. Or are they from JK to grade five? Do we have any information on that?
Maybe I'd ask Superintendent Bukhich to comment on that, either.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for the question, vice chair Dour. Yes, our cases that we've had as of late do concentrate mostly in the elementary, early elementary grades. So that would be K to roughly five or six, grade six.
Vice Chair Dour, do you have a follow up? Thank you. Trustee Demossi, you have the floor?
I would not be supporting this motion. I think we're starting to go down the road where we're trying to measure an appetite for parents of whether or not they want to vaccinate their children. And I think this opens the door to that. And I do not think that we're there yet. I think this is a decision by the federal government, which then goes down to the province, which then comes down to our local public health. I would not be supporting the six to eight. As such, it would have to be removed and brought to a vote. Thank you.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata, you have the floor?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I think we're getting in the weeds here. I think this is a letter to request a review from public health. As trustee O'Brien stated, we are not public health. I don't claim to be public health. So this is a letter requesting that public health take a look at a few of these areas. And they will come back and let us know whether they think it's safe in order to make any changes or not, period. So I think we need to move forward.
Thank you. So nobody else wishes to speak. We'll call a recorded vote. So this is on the secondary amendment, which is strictly the red statement, grades six to eight. So I'm assuming you don't want to close, trustee Agnew, or?
I don't need to close. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So we'll go to a recorded vote again on the secondary amendment, which is grades six to eight. Trustee O'Brien, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Mazriyamar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokio?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
I'm in favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed.
Vice Chair Dour? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Demossi?
Opposed.
And trustee Murphy's in favor. It's four-four tie, so it fails.
Father, Mr. Chair, I didn't vote. I voted opposed.
Oh, sorry. So the motion fails. Sorry, trustee Carabella. I missed you.
That's okay.
So we are now going to the amendment, which is in blue in front of you. I don't have anybody else on the speaker's list for that. So trustee Carabella can close, if you wish, or we can go to a recorded vote.
Well, I can close by saying it's really to reflect the parents who have approached me and the letter in our board package. It's not really reflecting, it's reflecting that children could be, because they're outside, that they are able to now play in without being in cohorts and being able to play with children outside their classrooms and in outside. So just asking public health to review that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go to recorded votes. Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazriyamar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokio?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Dour? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Demossi?
Abstain.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor, so the amendment carries. We're now going to go back to the, we're going to vote on the motion as amended. Trustee Agnew, do you want to close?
No, I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazriyamar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokio?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed.
Vice Chair Dour? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Demossi?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy's in favor, so the motion as amended carries. We are moving on to item 10.3, I believe. The paper's everywhere, so let's go with that. ACDSB student census. Seda, you have the floor?
Thank you and good evening and through you, Mr. Chair. If I can request Rosie or Andrea to share a few slides as we begin to share information about the upcoming student census. I will be joined by my colleagues Andrea Swenden and Dr. Lisa Collimore in presenting some information about the upcoming census. Thank you, Andrea. If you'd like to flip over to the next slide, please. Yeah, so what we would like to present here today is to provide some information about the rationale for the student census. And as you may know, we carried out a pilot last year in May. So we'll be providing some results of that pilot and then some information on how we're preparing for the upcoming census early next year. Next slide, please. Next slide. So when we, sort of to set the context and talk about why is it important to collect identity-based data, you know, it's important for us to collect this data to better understand our students' identities and experiences and really support every student to achieve, believe, and belong. It's to address systemic barriers that may emerge through the data collection analysis and to be, and to be able to address and bridge those gaps. And as you may be aware, all school boards are mandated to collect identity-based data through a census in compliance with the Anti-Racism Act and the Ontario's Anti-Racism Data Standard. Next, please. So when we think about what kind of information are we collecting, we want to emphasize that this voluntary student census will collect information about 10 specific areas that we're mandated to collect information on, and these are highlighted for you, for your reference. Next slide, please. So again, the purpose then and the intended outcome is to create and promote a more equitable and inclusive learning environment where all students can achieve, believe, and belong. And as I mentioned, it's to look at, you know, where there might be gaps or disparities. And once we have that data, how do we address those and change that towards equitable outcomes for all? Next slide, please. And the work of the census is really very closely aligned with the core principles of Catholic social teaching to uphold the dignity of every individual and support all students to achieve, believe, and belong. It's also aligned with the equity and inclusive education policy, which clearly articulates our commitment to collecting and analyzing data to address any disparities that may emerge, so that we can support student achievement and well-being. I'm going to now hand over to Lisa, Dr. Collimore, to share a little bit about the census pilot study results.
So good evening, everyone. So as you know, and as is noted in the board package, we completed our student census pilot last year. And there were really five main goals for this project. We wanted to determine the feasibility of the study protocol, to test the appropriateness of the data collection measures, to test the actual process, to test data entry coding items, linking it back to our student information system, and finally, to test the actual census items themselves, to see if they were asking the intended questions. So we had a pretty lengthy process from start to finish, from securing the funding to consulting with other boards and others who have done this work. The Equity Secretariat provided a lot of direction and guidance to setting up the survey on a survey platform, and then finally to collecting the data and making sense of it and reflecting on it. Overall, we heard from 223 participants, and they were across the whole board. So from K all the way to grade 12, we heard from different people. And ultimately, our study was successful in the sense that we were able to get feedback on the census items themselves. We heard that most, almost all the students understood the items. We heard that our respondents wanted the survey to be offered in multiple languages. And so overall, we feel that we are quite prepared for the board-wide census because we've refined some of our protocols for how we're going to send out the survey. We've worked out some bugs in our survey platform. And we've also started linking some of the test data to the new student information system and working out some of those kinks as well. So we are well-prepared for the board-wide census that is forthcoming. So we are going to be preparing for the student census for 2022. It will be implemented this year. So in February 28th to April 4th in 2022, all students will be invited to complete the student census. So for kindergarten to grade eight, this will be completed by the parents or the guardians. And before the grades nine to 12, the students will complete it during class time. So as you know, there is a lot of promotion that needs to be done because we hope to hear from as many students and families as possible. And so we've started that work, and we're happy to share one of those promotional pieces tonight with you. It's our promotional video that was created by many stakeholders in the system.
In our cultural background, in Indigenous culture, storytelling is important. And knowing who you are and where you're from is the foundation of what we do and who we are.
Gathering reliable data is really important to the work we do here at Halton Catholic. As a Catholic school board, we believe all of our students are made in the image and likeness of God. Therefore, they possess a certain inherent dignity. So how could we not work to support ensuring equitable outcomes for all of our students?
Halton Catholic's School Board is preparing to implement a board-wide census in the spring of 2022. Gathering robust demographic data, such as language, race, religion, disability, and Indigenous identity will help us to identify and address barriers to student success and well-being.
The importance of collecting student data is to know who's in our school so that we can gear our learning and gear our education towards student outcomes, to make sure that all students achieve, believe, and belong.
It's important to collect demographic data because it makes groups or other people feel more included.
In my school community, it's important to collect demographic data because it allows schools to better understand different backgrounds, characteristics of like group of people, ethnicity, and race.
Collecting census data, to me as a parent, is vital. It is vital because it's giving a voice, it is recognizing the diversity, equity, and inclusion of communities across Halton.
When we're looking at specific data, like Indigenous data, it's very, very important to know who our students are, to make people feel that they belong and feel welcome. Because for far too long, Indigenous students did not feel welcomed. They did not feel like they belonged, and they certainly did not achieve.
Having the collection of the student census allows us to collect this in an objective manner.
Personally, I believe that it's important for students to complete the new HCDSB census because I think that with the information gained from the census, that our school board will be able to make much more inclusive spaces for all students.
As a Muslim student, my lived experiences are definitely different than other students that go to the school. I'm very grateful for the inclusivity shown by the board, as it allows me to be the best version of myself.
We know that when we are collecting data about sensitive information, that it can raise concerns about privacy and stigmatization, particularly among families who have experienced discrimination.
As a transgender person, I am hoping my voice can be heard. It might help the people who are trans to not feel alone because they're not alone. And it would make us feel a lot better and more included, that we are heard, that we're seen.
We want to assure you that when we use and collect and disclose our data, we will be following and in compliance with the relevant legislation and that we will be using protective measures to ensure that we protect your personal information.
This commitment is enshrined in our equity and inclusive education policy and is aligned with our commitment to students to support every student to achieve, believe, and belong.
It is important for all students to complete the student census so HCDSB can gather important information about students in marginalized communities so they can help students achieve, believe, and belong.
Ultimately, gathering the data will allow us to ensure that all students will be able to reach their God-given potential and that we can ensure that all students can achieve, believe, and belong.
We encourage all students and families to participate in the board-wide census. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I encourage all students, no matter what identity that you identify with, to take the student census because it's incredibly important to take, to acknowledge the different disparities that students face in our board.
Please fill out the census information.
I'm here today to encourage you to take part in our upcoming student census.
By taking the time to provide such information, it allows those who are assisting us, and it takes a village, to raise our children, to have better resources, to know where perhaps there are some gaps or some areas that are lacking, and gives an opportunity for those needs to be met.
I encourage you to participate. I encourage you to engage. I encourage you to ensure that your voices are heard, that the education system is enhanced to meet everybody's needs.
Sorry about that. I can't do both. I can't share my camera and my screen, so give me a second. I'll turn on my camera after. I'm just going to take another minute or so just to go over the communications timelines, as well as some of the materials and tactics that we will use to kind of raise awareness about the student census over the next three or four months. So as you can see there on the timeline, we've just begun phase one, which will go from November 1st to January 30th. We're really going to take the next three months to, we're calling this our Coming Soon campaign. We want to make sure that students and parents of elementary students are aware of why we are implementing the student census, how the census aligns with the work that we are currently doing through CETA's Office of Human Rights and Equity, as well as why it is so important that students and parents of elementary students complete the census. So we will take the next three months, make sure they have the information they need. And hopefully, by the time February 28th rolls around, when the emails go out asking students and parents to complete the census, they will have the information they need to be able to decide if they would like to do so. So how we will do that, phase one, we've already updated our board and school websites. We've started with our social media campaign, and we will be hosting a number of info sessions that I'll get to in a minute. Phase two will run February 1st to February 27th, and that's really our pre-launch communication where we begin sending very targeted emails to the secondary students who will be asked to complete, as well as parents with one or more children in our elementary schools. Then phase three is the window when the
Then phase three is the window when the census is open. That's February 28th to April 4th. And during this time, there will be frequent reminders, both via email directly as well as on social media and through weekly updates, as well as website. Phase four, and you'll see there, phase four and phase five are tentative right now, and that's really contingent on, you know, the work of our research office. The student census findings right now are tentatively, we think that they will be available for to be shared in aggregate with schools in December of 2022. And hopefully posted a report that we can circulate to our entire HCD SBA community by January of 2023. So just how will we spread the word about the student census? We have a number of tactics and promotional material that we've we've already developed and we're still developing more. There will be FAQs. And as Lisa mentioned earlier, you know, one of the, to be responsive to some of the feedback that we received during the pilot, we will make sure that all material is translated and the FAQs are one of the material pieces that have already been translated into different languages. We have family info sessions, there are posters that have been created for both for print and digital. Of course, we'll use social media. There's that video that you just saw, and we're also from that video creating little mini videos that are easily shared and digested on social media, website updates, infographics, of course, emails, digital banners, which are banners that appear on the platforms such as D2L so that students see them when they sign on and they're reminder with QR code and link so that they can get more information and school messages. So here is just a glimpse of some of the material that you will see soon. This most, some of it is being printed right now, the posters on the door hangers. Then we also have to prepare the, that's the D12 banner that I was referring to. It's just a glimpse and they have, you'll see the posters have the QR codes of anyone can take their phone and just scan and it takes you right to the page on our website with the student census. So in terms of next steps, so we've started phase one. As I mentioned, our website's already updated with a feature story prominent on the website. Schools have been provided with a communications toolkit that will help them promote the student census in their communities. And and of course, we've launched on our social media. Over the month of November, we've got a few information presentations scheduled, obviously tonight to the Board of Trustees. And then there's a presentation to CPIC on Monday, November 15th, and a presentation to SEAC on Monday, November 29th. To be determined are the presentations that will be for both, for families, for both parents and students. And once we have additional details about that, they will be communicated. And that's the presentation for now and happy to, you know, with Ceta and Lisa to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Great, great video. You didn't get the Slimming Down app, I see, but we'll work on requisitioning that in the future. On the speakers list, we have Trustee O'Brien, Trustee Demasi, then Trustee DeRosa, and Trustee Caravella. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Ceta or Laura. I'm looking at the report and it says, preparing for the student census. The student census will be implemented this year between February and April. And it says all students will be invited to complete the student census as follows, kindergarten to grade eight, to be completed by parents and guardians. Then I'm clicking on the findings. And it says in the findings, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I'm reading this wrong. There is a conclusion made for students above grade four. Email distribution should be used with student emails rather than parent emails with surveys completed during class time. So I'm, I'm reading this two ways. I don't, I don't get it. So who's, can you just kind of elaborate that?
So through you, Mr. Chair, it's Lisa. So the census pilot study used a different process because there were additional questions that were asked of the students other than the actual census items. So we asked them for their feedback about whether they understood each item. So after they saw the census item, they then saw a follow-up question that said, did you understand it? And then they had an opportunity to provide like written feedback of what they didn't understand. And that data helped us to modify how the wording of the questions were presented. So there were additional questions that were asked of the students and so we had a different process in terms of, you know, the process of how they were invited to participate. We have since received a bit of direction or different direction than than what we intended to do with, from the pilot study. So now the Equity Secretariat has suggested that parents and guardians of kindergartens to grade eight must complete the census on behalf of the child or with the child present. Before, when we did the census pilot, we were only piloting what it would look like if parents were filling it out for kindergarten to grade three and then grades four through 12 would have would have answered it in class time. So it has since changed based on the Equity Secretariat's direction.
So as it stands now, K-Day will be done with the parents' presence.
That's correct. Parents will be, will be filling it out on behalf of the child or with the child.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Trustee Demasi, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Dr. Collmore, I guess. So this particular act came into being in 2017. It was passed in 2018. And it stated then that over five years, all the partners would decide what is the mandatory data to be collected. We're in the fifth year now, so can you tell me how you established or who established the 10 criterias of the information that you're collecting? I would turn specifically to socioeconomic status. I would think that the Privacy Commissioner and the Ontario Human Rights Commission would take quarrel with collecting data that is socioeconomic driven. Can you address that for me, please?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. So the items have been put together by the Equity Secretariat and so they have provided all boards with a template and with the the number of items that we need to ask. The social economic status item was one of the recent changes, so that one was just added very recently, so it was not part of our census pilot. And the item itself for social economic status are based, it's a proxy for social economic status. So the question that they have suggested asks about, you know, your parents' highest level of education and what is this person's employment status? So those are the types of questions that they have recommended for socioeconomic status. Ceta, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Thank you. And through you, absolutely have nothing more to add except to reiterate that the 10 standards were prescribed by the Equity Secretariat. How we have them and we're still fine-tuning the questions around socioeconomic status.
We have to vote to extend, so if I can interrupt the questions for for a moment. So we're going to take a recorded vote to extend to 11:30. Trustee Bowie.
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar.
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa. Trustee DeRosa.
In favor, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Doer. Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Demasi.
In favor.
Trustee Caravella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Erntrunato.
In favor.
Mercy's in favor. We're extended to 11:30. Trustee Demasi, did you have a follow-up question?
I did. I'm trying to reconstruct it in my head here now. So when the socioeconomic status question was added to the nine original questions, how did that come about? Because I'm reading here that the Privacy Commissioner was strongly against and so was the Ontario Human Rights Commissioner. And then at the very beginning, the measurable data to be collected was Indigenous identity, race, religion, and ethnic origin, child welfare, education, and justice sector. So, or in education and justice sector. So I, I'm having a hard time figuring out how you can ask a socioeconomic question without bringing out, you know, where somebody's working, how much they're making, and that in itself is inequitable. So how are we getting over this hurdle?
Excuse me, Dr. Collmore?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I can certainly start with this question. So the Equity Secretariat, like I said, has recently released a number of new suggestions. And the addition of SES was part of that list. And they believe that it will help us with the bigger picture of identifying whether or not there are systemic disparities. And it's one of the items that will help paint a clearer picture for boards. Ceta, I'm not sure if you have anything else to add.
I have the floor to speak.
Yes, sorry. Go ahead, please.
That's okay. Yeah, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So the originally, and I'm trying to toggle between my screen, originally under the anti-racism data standards, the four required questions were Indigenous identity, ethnic origin, race, and religion. And as was mentioned, the additional categories were added because also in the discussion with the Equity Secretariat, some of the concerns was that students, you know, in, you know, in lower-income households are experiencing disparities in terms of achievements and wellbeing. So it was to be able to disaggregate and analyze and address that particularly through that lens. That's the information I have. And these are the 10 categories that, as was mentioned, the Equity Secretariat says we need to collect.
Okay, so it seems to me there might be a disconnect because when the commissioner spoke on this particular matter, there's, they were suggested addition to the original questions. They are not mandated, to my understanding. There's no legislative legislation that requires anybody to ask those questions, which then now brings me to the actual body of the survey. If we go into the body of the survey, what happens if the respondents do not wish to answer a particular question? Does it allow you to go ahead or does it stop you and says you have to ask, answer this question? Otherwise, you can't move forward.
Ceta, are you able to answer that question or Dr. Collmore?
Yeah, I'm here. Through you, Mr. Chair. So all of the census survey is mandatory. Every question is, sorry, is voluntary. So there is, so people will be able to skip questions or not answer questions. It doesn't stop them. It doesn't force you to select an answer. So if they came to this question and they were, didn't want to answer it for some reason, they would just skip it or not answer it.
So the addition, so you agree with me that the addition of questions that have been added most recently are suggested as opposed to mandated questions?
Director Dany would like to speak. Maybe I'll let Dr. Collmore respond to that first. I just wanted to add something else to put it into a bit of context.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. So at the last meeting a few weeks back on October 20th, Ceta and I both attended a session with with the Equity Secretariat. And he said that the SES question was to be added to the student census for anyone that was still going to be implementing their census and who hadn't yet done it. So that was the direction.
Director Dany?
Sorry, can I just get a clarification? So the survey, so this would skew the whole data collection because there have been surveys that have already been completed by other boards and other institutions. So here we come in the fifth year of a mandated data collection. And we're going to be adding new questions, which will not be congruent to the original questions that were mandated.
Director Dany?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't disagree with what Trustee Demasi is saying. However, we haven't done a student survey before, so this will be new information for us. And trustees would also be aware, I did forward the draft board improvement and equity plan. It's just a draft, but I believe the final, the final board improvement and equity plan from the ministry will be very close to the draft that I shared with trustees a couple of weeks ago. And as part of the data collection, students from low-income households are captured in that required data collection to be implemented into the new provincial template.
Trustee Demasi, I'll put you back in the queue if you have further questions. Up next, we have Trustee DeRosa, followed by Trustee Caravella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, my question's very simple. Is this a mandatory survey that needs to be taken?
Dr. Collmore, would you like to answer that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the census collection is mandated to school boards. But the census, participation in the census is voluntary. So we will invite everyone to take part and it's up to the person whether or not they will respond.
So may I have a follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
In that particular case, then, what is the tolerance rate of a response rate that we will deem as being acceptable and representative of the total population?
Dr. Collmore?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So in this case, you know, the more, the more people we hear from, the better. It's a better representation of our truer story of what's happening in our board. So, you know, I want to say we want to have as high of a response rate as possible. But given that it's voluntary, we have to do what we can with respect to promotion and sharing why it's so important. So hopefully that our community members hear that and they, when they see the invitations that come forth, they, you know, they see the the value in this collection and they participate.
May I have a follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
So Dr. Collmore, I do appreciate that, and I would support the fact that, you know, it has to be promoted. We have to encourage participation and value this information. But the fact of the matter is, is that is that chances are, as surveys will go, if people, this is not a census in the true sense of the word, it's a voluntary census. So we have to provide for at least the fact that you will get, we will get low participation rates. And if such is the case, what is the the limit or the ceiling from which we can draw representative statistical conclusions? Because if we, if we get, if we go to all our constituents, I don't know what that number is, but let's assume it's 200,000 constituents. You know, if we don't get 1%, is it really representative statistically to draw conclusions? And that's, that's really what I'm wondering. Notwithstanding other issues that may be or may not be around, around the idea of the census, the fact of the matter is, is that if we don't get the response rates that are statistically representative, where does that leave us?
Director Dany, maybe I could just jump in for a second. First of all, it's a student census, so it wouldn't go up to 200,000 people. The census would go to our students to be, to be completed. And we've mentioned the co-terminus board quite a bit tonight. They went through this process last year. And while it's a different community, it's our Holton community. I don't know if either Lisa or Ceta, you have a sense of what the response rate was like in the Holton District Board?
What was that? Do we, do we have a sense?
Yeah, Bill.
Go ahead, Ceta.
See, I think you're muted.
Yes, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So I did have conversations.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So I did have conversations as part of the Equity Secretariat meetings. And I believe our co-terminus board has had a very high response rate. As a board average, they did it last year in March, their average was in the high, mid to high 80, 80% response rate. And so that's what they have. I also heard from other boards where response rates were lower, around 60%. So a number of boards have, particularly in the last year, completed their census. And all boards have the same requirements in terms of it being a mandatory collection process, but a voluntary participation. So others have had 60% participation. And like I said, our co-terminus board had a mid to high 80% response rate.
Thank you, Sita. That puts a perspective on things. Mr. Chair, can I have another question?
I'd like to put you back in the queue. We have Trustee.
Yeah. I'll get back in the queue, no problem.
Thank you. Trustee Carabello, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A lot of my questions have been answered by the previous trustees' questions. So the initial participation rate, so was, out of how many total? You had 223 participants, but what was the potential total?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So we sent out an invitation to just over 2,700 families.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's all I had because my other questions were answered already. Thank you.
Antamasi, you have the floor?
Trustee Antamasi, you have the floor? Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So based on the response Dr. Colomore just had, so you sent out an invitation to 2,700 people, you had a response rate of 235. What is that about? What percentage response rate is that? 9%? 8%?
Director Daly?
Yeah, I think that'd be correct. And that's why we're going to implement a three-month period leading up to this census. So we can encourage participation. And also because this is a different type of survey that we, that we're implementing with our students and families. So we want to make sure that we can adequately explain why this is really important to supporting our student achievement.
So, follow up?
Yes, please go ahead.
So for our students in secondary, which are allowed to respond on their own, is there not a legal requirement, a legal age requirement to answer questions which are family oriented? For them to make that decision on whether or not they want to answer it? So I'm looking at the legal implications of asking, let's say, a 17-year-old or a 16-year-old, or a 15-year-old for that matter, that would be asked about socioeconomic status that they may answer to, that the parents may not want them to answer. So then my question becomes, where, is there a legal, are there legal handcuffs that could potentially come back that our constituents could take, could question?
Dr. Colomore?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So according to the data standards, Data Standards 7 in particular, each survey will have to start with a voluntary express consent checkbox. So you'll see in the survey, all participants will see that. And that's what is required in order to respect the dignity and privacy of all respondents.
Correct. So, but my question is very specific. So what if a 15-year-old decides to undertake and respond and meets that criteria? And then the parent comes back and saying, well, you had no right to allow my son or my daughter to answer those particular questions. What is our legal ground? And so, in, with regards to that?
Dr. Colomore, can you answer that question?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I am going to have to defer to somebody else that has that legal perspective.
Director Daly, any suggestions?
No, we survey students all the time. We surveyed students, School Climate Survey recently. It's a voluntary survey. I would hazard to say that a student that's 15 or 16 or 17 years old would be able to answer those questions. There's nothing hidden about the survey. Parents will be invited to find out what the survey is about. We'll be promoting it over a three-month period. It is a requirement put to us by the ministry. I think that's all I could probably say at this point.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. So you're saying to me that it's open-ended, insofar there's no legal requirement or ramifications for asking socioeconomic questions of somebody that's part of a family that is underage and may be disclosing information that the parents do not want them to. And there is no handcuffs to prevent somebody from answering those questions. That's, that's really what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
I don't think I said that, but.
No, 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 I'm not suggesting you're saying that, Secretary Daly. I'm saying based on the questions, based on the questionnaire, based on the requirements, someone of the, of an age of 14, 13, is asked to fill out a questionnaire. They're asked to submit socioeconomic data about their family. And we're allowed to do that. I just find it really hard to believe it's.
Okay, thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to pick up from that. I think as a parent, it's reasonable to assume. And although I do understand the spirit of what we're trying to do here and would certainly be supportive. But we need to assume that as, you know, the community of parents, some of them will take exception to their minors being polled directly, potentially without their knowledge. And that, that is troublesome to me. Regardless, when I referred it to, in my previous question about 200,000, I wasn't referring necessarily to students. I know we have less students than that. Now, I understand that the pilot that we went to, the population that we surveyed was 2,700. Okay? For which we received an 8% response rate, which isn't apparently the 80% that the co-terminus board has received. So that's my first question. The other question is.
Just to clarify, the co-terminus board's response rate was not for the pilot, it was for the full-on survey.
I understand.
The co-terminus board went through a process of explaining what the survey was about, had information sessions with parents and students. And that's, I would, I would hazard to guess that's why they got such a good response rate.
I understand, Director Daly.
The plan we have putting forward will garner a good response rate.
That, that, that is perfectly understood. And I didn't misinterpret that at all. And I would add to that, that if the co-terminus board has a magic wand to increase a pilot from an 8% ratio to an 80% ratio, there's a lot of marketing companies who would want to understand how they actually did that. Nevertheless, this is not about the co-terminus board. The point is, is that we are, we are moving ahead with taking a census on minors without necessarily the parent's knowledge. And that is problematic. If there are any legal implications, they need to be covered before we move forward. This is not, I'm not speaking against the process and the idea of collecting data. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the manner in which we are moving forward. So and this, I would think, should concern every one of us, not only me. Thank you.
Let's let Dr. Colomore respond to that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So just to clarify, when we spoke earlier about the promotional materials and the communication materials, the more targeted email messages that will be going out to parents, that we will follow as we do with other board-wide collections, like, like Director Daly said earlier, with respect to school climate, we will be sending out an information letter to all parents, informing them of the purpose of the census, the goals of the census, why it's important. And it will also have, and our parents will also have an opportunity to opt out if they choose or if they don't wish their, their secondary child to participate. And we will share that information with our schools.
Thank you. Trustee Carabello, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the K-2 grade eight, they will fill out the census with their parents. So it will not be done during school time. And I'm wondering about secondary. It is also voluntary for them. Will that be done during school time? Or will they be asked to do it outside of school class time?
Director Daly?
The secondary students will be asked to complete it during class time.
Trustee Carabello, do you have a follow up?
I thought I did, but I forgot it now. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Trustee Antamasi?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So there's a few things at work here. The identity-based data, which is essentially health data, there is a requirement. So in June 28th, 2021, there were changes made that precluded that, those particular questions to be asked. So much so that there was a directive that the families, that went back to the Family Services Act of 2017, which again, precluded us asking any of those questions. How are we getting around being able to ask them if there's legislation that says you can't ask?
Sorry, Trustee Antamasi, you said health questions? Or did I mishear you?
Yeah. So, so if you're asking about sexual orientation and gender identity, those are health questions. Those particular health questions, you're not allowed to ask. They're voluntary disclosures. We're asking and collecting this data, which goes in the face of legislation that says you can't. So my question is, again, how are we circumventing the law in being able to ask these questions? Especially of minors or of kids that are under 16? I, I don't understand that. Help me out because I, the legislation is the legislation. It's, it's most recent. And it speaks to the Anti-Racism Act of 2017, which, which is the preamble of this particular study, these, this data collection that's, that's being requested by the government.
Just a couple, I guess, a couple of things. I, I'm not sure, or I wouldn't agree that those questions are health questions. And certainly, Trustee Antamasi, I can express your concerns about the survey with the ministry who is directing us to implement the census.
The ministry is only a vehicle. This is not mandated by the ministry. This is mandated by human rights and all the other departments.
Is part of the Ministry of Education.
Thanks. So Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, I, I don't want, my issue or my debate is not whether health questions are not health questions. I leave to, I leave that to my colleague to argue that because he knows the area, you know, he knows the topic very well. My issue is very, very simple, is on what basis are we proceeding to take a census from our minors without our parents' approval? And that is as fundamental as this. I want to take the survey, but I want to ask for parents' approval to be able to do it. And doing it in, in school is just a backdoor way to get, to avoid that very fundamental issue.
First of all, I take.
As a parent.
First of all, Trustee DeRosa, with all due respect, I take exception to you saying that staff are trying to do some sort of backdoor way to bypass parents.
No, I didn't say staff. I didn't say staff, Director Daly. And if I, if I, if that was interpreted that way, I apologize. I didn't say staff. I said that as a parent, I would take exception for this survey, for my son or my daughter to be surveyed without approval, given that they are minors. Pretty simple.
Could I, could I just ask Dr. Colomore to explain one more time the process of how the surveys would be advertised, distributed, and students would either complete them or not complete them?
I would welcome that because if I'm misunderstanding what's going on, I really want to get it clear because I don't like what I'm hearing. Thank you.
Dr. Colomore?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. So as I mentioned a little bit earlier, part of our promotional materials and part of our targeted email to parents will be that we will be sending out an information letter, which is customary for all other mandated data collections board-wide. And in that information letter, it clearly states the purpose of the census collection, why, why we're collecting it, what we plan to do with the data. And for secondary students, parents will have the opportunity to opt out if they do not want their child to participate in class. And that data or that information or that list will be shared with the respective schools. It's really important that, to note, like you, we were talking a little bit earlier about response rates. Ultimately, we want to hear from as many families and students as possible. And so part of this promotion, part of these communications is really so that parents can be part of those conversations with their children. So that everyone can make, you know, the best decision when it comes to completing it or not. And we've said many times tonight that the census, while it's mandated for the board to offer the census, the participation is voluntary. And so if there are questions that students don't wish, don't want to answer, or parents don't want their child to answer, students may skip that question. Hope this answers and clarifies.
Mr. Chair, may I, my follow up?
We, Trustee DeRosa, we have two other trustees who haven't spoken yet.
It's really relevant and it's really short.
Please go ahead.
Dr. Colomore, I thank you for the explanation. I understand that there is, I heard before that there was a letter going out explaining to parents and encouraging participation. And that is perfectly fine. I would add to that, that that letter should specifically include a letter of permission. And then move forward. Let's move forward with this, this initiative. Because this is a matter of parents giving permission for their minors to participate in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So on the speakers list, we have Trustee O'Hern Churnata, Trustee Guzzo. We're going to have to vote to extend to 12 o'clock. I'll go to recorded votes. Trustee Mazriyamar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwam?
In, in favor.
Trustee Agner?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa? Trustee DeRosa?
This is to extend beyond 11:30. The unanimous vote?
Correct.
I would say in favor.
Vice Chair Dure? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Carabello?
In favor.
Trustee Bryan?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Churnata?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Okay, we're not unanimous, so we will complete the item that we're dealing with. Trustee O'Hern Churnata, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not quite sure where to start, but I'm going to start on the optimistic side and the positive side of this conversation because I think we're going down a rabbit hole. So first of all, I want So first of all, I want to thank Dr. Colomore, because that presentation on YouTube will, uh, hopefully enforce a lot of participation, that I don't have a crystal ball yet. So let's wait till the survey goes out, and then we'll discuss the participation, participation rates. And I think it's very value-added. I think it's going to give us data that's going to help the school board and the Board of Trustees and the entire board service our entire school community. So I really want to say, well done. I'm looking forward to it. It is optional, so if there's any concerns there, people will opt out. It, it's pretty simple. So thank you for a job well done.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to go back to the fact that this isn't something new. We've already done a pilot. Um, this has been discussed at length. Um, there was actually a motion passed by this board for us to include certain things on it. I, I'm just a little perplexed as to how we think that this is, how it seems or gives the optics that there's something new going on here. Um, I appreciate the fact that, uh, Dr. Colomore and, uh, and Seda have, you know, brought more information for us to let us know what's happening and the promotional piece, uh, so that it's shared with everybody. I think it's fantastic. I think it's needed. I think it's a, a move in the right direction, which is where we're supposed to go. And we're doing it before the timeframe of when it's mandated to be done. I believe it's twenty-twenty-three. I've heard some really interesting comments here, and I, I'm just, I, I just don't understand why this is happening and why the debate is going on when this is something, again, like I said, this isn't new. Pilot's already been done. Staff has worked tremendously hard. And all of this information is so important for us, moving forward, for what needs to be done, for us to, to deal with a certain items, and for us to know, um, what our demographics are within our schools, um, so that we can do better. You know, at the end of the day, we're always striving to do better, and this is a step in the right direction. So again, I thank you, I thank everybody who participated in this. I think it's wonderful. I'm very excited, and I can't wait for us to get to the results of all of this.
Uh, thank you. So at, at this point, um, we've, we've seemed to be.